Four, five, six, seven. I have a quorum. Four, five, six, seven. I have a quorum. Four, five, six, seven. I have a quorum.
Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you?
Good. Good. Good.
Okay, I'm Athena. Okay, I'm Athena. Okay, I'm Athena.
Great. Great. Great.
All right. All right. All right. Our council? Our council? Our council?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yep, you can give it to me and I'll pass around. Yep, you can give it to me and I'll pass around. Yep, you can give it to me and I'll pass around.
I seem to be connected but not connected, so there's no meaning. I seem to be connected but not connected, so there's no meaning. I seem to be connected but not connected, so there's no meaning.
I'll come and check. I'll come and check. I'll come and check.
One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. One, two, three, four, five. Council, the open meeting law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without Council, the open meeting law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without Council, the open meeting law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location while providing the a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location while providing the a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location while providing the public with adequate alternative access to the meeting. This meeting is accessible in public with adequate alternative access to the meeting. This meeting is accessible in public with adequate alternative access to the meeting. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcaster on Amherst Media Channel 9 real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcaster on Amherst Media Channel 9 and real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcaster on Amherst Media Channel 9 and and live stream. In fact, there are live stream. In fact, there are live stream. In fact, there are ten counselors in the town room at this time. I mention that specifically because I've ten counselors in the town room at this time. I mention that specifically because I've ten counselors in the town room at this time. I mention that specifically because I've gotten some comments that said, when are you going to go back in person? And we've gotten some comments that said, when are you going to go back in person? And we've gotten some comments that said, when are you going to go back in person? And we've actually been back in person since the beginning of January 2023. So, given that we have a actually been back in person since the beginning of January 2023. So, given that we have a actually been back in person since the beginning of January 2023. So, given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the April 1, 2024 regular town council meeting quorum of the council present, I'm calling the April 1, 2024 regular town council meeting quorum of the council present, I'm calling the April 1, 2024 regular town council meeting to order at 6:32. to order at 6:32. to order at 6:32. I'll call upon each counselor. Please unmute your mic, say present. That means we can I'll call upon each counselor. Please unmute your mic, say present. That means we can I'll call upon each counselor. Please unmute your mic, say present. That means we can hear you and you can hear us. And when you're done, make sure you mute your mic again. hear you and you can hear us. And when you're done, make sure you mute your mic again. hear you and you can hear us. And when you're done, make sure you mute your mic again. Patty Angeles. Patty Angeles. Patty Angeles.
Present. Present. Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier. Anna Devlin-Gothier. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present. Present. Present.
Counselor Ette. Counselor Ette. Counselor Ette.
Present.
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 Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke. Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke. Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke.
Present. Present. Present.
Bob Hegner. Bob Hegner. Bob Hegner.
Present.
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 Counselor Lord. Counselor Lord. Counselor Lord.
Present.
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 Pam Rooney. Pam Rooney. Pam Rooney.
Here.
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 Counselor Ryan. Counselor Ryan. Counselor Ryan.
Present.
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 Kathy Shane. Kathy Shane. Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg. Andy Steinberg. Andy Steinberg.
Present.
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 Jennifer Taub. Jennifer Taub. Jennifer Taub.
Present.
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 And Counselor Walker. And Counselor Walker. And Counselor Walker.
Here.
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 We are all present this evening. There is no chat room for the meeting. If you have We are all present this evening. There is no chat room for the meeting. If you have We are all present this evening. There is no chat room for the meeting. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment, use the raised technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment, use the raised technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment, use the raised hand button. If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing technology, Athena hand button. If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing technology, Athena hand button. If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing technology, Athena and I will decide how to address the situation, including the possibility of having to suspend and I will decide how to address the situation, including the possibility of having to suspend and I will decide how to address the situation, including the possibility of having to suspend the meeting until we get the technology working again. the meeting until we get the technology working again. the meeting until we get the technology working again. There will be one general public comment period at this meeting immediately following There will be one general public comment period at this meeting immediately following There will be one general public comment period at this meeting immediately following the announcements. The order of the agenda is the same as posted. I want to call attention the announcements. The order of the agenda is the same as posted. I want to call attention the announcements. The order of the agenda is the same as posted. I want to call attention to three meetings coming up. April 8th, again, one week from today, we have a regular to three meetings coming up. April 8th, again, one week from today, we have a regular to three meetings coming up. April 8th, again, one week from today, we have a regular town council meeting. April 25th, which is a Monday, at 6:30, we will have a public town council meeting. April 25th, which is a Monday, at 6:30, we will have a public town council meeting. April 25th, which is a Monday, at 6:30, we will have a public hearing on the regional school budget. That will be virtual. On April 29th, if needed, hearing on the regional school budget. That will be virtual. On April 29th, if needed, hearing on the regional school budget. That will be virtual. On April 29th, if needed, we will have a special town council meeting. we will have a special town council meeting. we will have a special town council meeting. Anyone wishing to speak? We're getting ready for general public comment. I'm going Anyone wishing to speak? We're getting ready for general public comment. I'm going Anyone wishing to speak? We're getting ready for general public comment. I'm going to wait for the audience to enter. to wait for the audience to enter. to wait for the audience to enter. While they're doing that, if you're on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, While they're doing that, if you're on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, While they're doing that, if you're on Zoom and you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. please raise your hand at this time. please raise your hand at this time. I will, not to worry. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room? If you have I will, not to worry. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room? If you have I will, not to worry. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room? If you have not signed up, please do so with Athena O'Keefe at this time. not signed up, please do so with Athena O'Keefe at this time. not signed up, please do so with Athena O'Keefe at this time. At this time, I also would like to remind those people who have brought signs into At this time, I also would like to remind those people who have brought signs into At this time, I also would like to remind those people who have brought signs into the room. It is fine that you have signs, but you may not hold them up in a manner the room. It is fine that you have signs, but you may not hold them up in a manner the room. It is fine that you have signs, but you may not hold them up in a manner that obstructs other people's view. that obstructs other people's view. that obstructs other people's view. We're waiting for people to finish signing up for public comment for those of you that We're waiting for people to finish signing up for public comment for those of you that We're waiting for people to finish signing up for public comment for those of you that are not in the room. are not in the room. are not in the room. Athena, how many people have signed up that are in the room? Athena, how many people have signed up that are in the room? Athena, how many people have signed up that are in the room?
Fourteen. Fourteen. Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you. And there are six people who have raised their hands that Fourteen, thank you. And there are six people who have raised their hands that Fourteen, thank you. And there are six people who have raised their hands that are on Zoom. Public comments are a matter within the jurisdiction of the town council. are on Zoom. Public comments are a matter within the jurisdiction of the town council. are on Zoom. Public comments are a matter within the jurisdiction of the town council. Residents are welcome to express their views. In this case, we're going to go for Residents are welcome to express their views. In this case, we're going to go for Residents are welcome to express their views. In this case, we're going to go for up to two minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter up to two minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter up to two minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the town council. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address of the town council. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address of the town council. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their rights to say the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their rights to say the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their rights to say hateful and unfortunately offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters hateful and unfortunately offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters hateful and unfortunately offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawless activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker of eminent lawless activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker of eminent lawless activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of freedom of speech. is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of freedom of speech. is engaging in unprotected speech, I must defer to the principles of freedom of speech. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have signed up, rotating between We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have signed up, rotating between We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have signed up, rotating between Zoom and in person. Let's start with in-person in the room. Zoom and in person. Let's start with in-person in the room. Zoom and in person. Let's start with in-person in the room.
Did you say two minutes or three minutes? Did you say two minutes or three minutes? Did you say two minutes or three minutes?
Two. Two. Two.
Two, thank you. Two, thank you. Two, thank you. First is Deb Leonard. Please come up, state your name and where you live before you begin First is Deb Leonard. Please come up, state your name and where you live before you begin First is Deb Leonard. Please come up, state your name and where you live before you begin your comment. your comment. your comment.
Hi, my name is Deb Leonard. I'm a resident of Amherst. I'd like to make it clear that
Hi, my name is Deb Leonard. I'm a resident of Amherst. I'd like to make it clear that
Hi, my name is Deb Leonard. I'm a resident of Amherst. I'd like to make it clear that
I'm speaking tonight to share my own personal thoughts. I do not speak to represent any
I'm speaking tonight to share my own personal thoughts. I do not speak to represent any I'm speaking tonight to share my own personal thoughts. I do not speak to represent any other committee or group of people I other committee or group of people I
other committee or group of people I am part of. So, I'm just going to really try to stick to I statements. And I'm just
am part of. So, I'm just going to really try to stick to I statements. And I'm just am part of. So, I'm just going to really try to stick to I statements. And I'm just
looking for the opportunity to make informed decisions about the policies and the budget
looking for the opportunity to make informed decisions about the policies and the budget looking for the opportunity to make informed decisions about the policies and the budget
that I'm facing as a voting member. So, I don't, it's my third month on the job, and
that I'm facing as a voting member. So, I don't, it's my third month on the job, and that I'm facing as a voting member. So, I don't, it's my third month on the job, and
I just have more questions than answers. The budget that, um, the budget that we had
I just have more questions than answers. The budget that, um, the budget that we had I just have more questions than answers. The budget that, um, the budget that we had
initially considered voting had a lot of questions that I had.
initially considered voting had a lot of questions that I had. initially considered voting had a lot of questions that I had.
Your comment. Back to the audience, Athena.
Amal Esfahani. Please state your name and where you live before you begin your comment. Thank you.
Yes, hello. My name is Ahmad Esfahani. I actually live in Greenfield. I'll be very brief. I'm here mainly for the minutes to inform the town of Amherst that I'm seeking nomination signatures to run in the upcoming primary for District 2 for the congressional election as a Republican. And I just wanted to notify the town and it being the minutes, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Going back to Zoom, Meg Gage, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, everyone. This is Meg Gage. I live at 208 Montague Road in North Amherst. My comments are a little unusual now that I'm hearing what this meeting is about, but I'm here to support the CPA proposal for the Mill River History Trail Project. It's incredibly exciting community organizing project. We made really good use of the first CPA grant that we got two years ago, $12,900, and a 200-page report covering the four initial historical sites, the two Roberts Mills, the one just west and one just east of the Francis Bridge, the Cushman Clam Club, which was a men's club that had a lot of exciting family dramas, we found out, and the Mill Canal that went from, goes along the whole north side of the park. There was a huge amount of industry that's gone on in North Amherst, but there was also a lot of indigenous activity. And we've discovered that an indigenous, probably Nipmalk Trail, a major trading trail, went right along pretty much where the river is. And we're reaching out to people from that community to help with this project. The current proposal is stage two, which will look at 15 additional sites. And it will also launch greater outreach to the broader community, website development, and addition, as I said, outreach to targeted constituencies like high school students and so on. Some of the aspects of this stage are not sponsored by the historic preservation guidelines of the CPA. And to that, to support those activities, like website design and community organizing, we're doing additional fundraising. We've raised $10,000, of which $5,000 is a match, and toward that, we've raised $1,000. So, that additional $15,000 will help us with those activities. If anybody should be interested, let me know. And also, if you'd like a copy of the report of the first research, I can email you the link. Most of these sites are on conservation land, and we're working really closely with the conservation staff and actually have invited them to appoint someone to join our planning committee. I'm going to skip some of what I had here. Sites not on the conservation land include the North Amherst Library, where there used to be, where the addition was just built, there used to be a blacksmith. And Catherine Stryker noticed as they were digging the foundation, these horseshoes were coming up out of the dirt. And she pulled them out and through an agreement with the town and Wright Builders, they've been saved, and we're hoping to have an exhibit. they've been saved and we're hoping to have an exhibit. My time is just about up. There's a whole bunch of other sites, the factory housing on Summer Street and so on.
Thank you, Meg.
Okay, one last, can I say one sentence? This is in the spirit of community archaeology, which is about engaging the community, not just experts.
Thank you.
Community is better at preserving historical things than experts in government.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Going back to the audience.
Tom Erwin.
My name is Tom Erwin. I live at 54th Central Avenue in Dalton, Massachusetts. I appreciate this opportunity to comment about the paint stewardship legislation presently before the House Ways and Means Committee. While a member of the Dalton Waste Management Recycling Committee, where we were facing the same daunting waste crisis that Amherst faces, rapidly increasing hauling costs and tipping fees, and we were looking for a solution. After a careful study of ways to address this issue, paint stewardship seemed like the perfect first step. And after confirming it was working well in the eyes of residents and retailers in Vermont, New York, and Connecticut, I became an advocate for this law. Paint stewardship is a program where unwanted paint can be returned to any participating paint retail store or transfer station whenever they're open without a disposal cost and without regard to where the paint was purchased. The cost to consumers is simply 75 cents to a dollar fee per gallon of paint at the time of purchase. Eighty percent of collected latex can be reprocessed to original specs and sold at 50% of the original cost, relieving our waste burden. The benefits Amherst will see are first, that is going to be a service Amherst residents will value. This is quickly apparent by noting that 92% of 735 Mass. residents dropping off items at household hazardous waste day events sign petition asking their legislator to become co-sponsors. This suggests that 92% of Amherst residents with unwanted paint, and likely there are many, would support this bill. And second, it will present no cost to municipalities and will decrease household hazardous waste day costs. Although 28 reps and 12 senators, including Representative Dom and Senator Comerford, sponsor or co-sponsor this bill, significant municipal support through resolutions is critical to compel serious consideration by the Ways and Means Committee. To take this matter up, view it favorably, and send it to the floor of the legislature per vote. Hence, I respectfully request the Amherst Town Council put paint stewardship on an upcoming agenda to make possible adding their valued endorsement of paint stewardship through passing a supportive resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. We're going back to Zoom. Tony Cunningham, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, this is Tony Cunningham, District 1. I am the parent of two children in the Amherst Public Schools, one in eighth grade at the middle school and one in fifth grade at Wildwood. And I'm speaking in favor of the town funding the fiscal year 2025 budget that was recommended by the Regional School Committee. A large part of this ask is for costs that are out of the control of the school committee. For example, employee health insurance has increased by almost 10% this year, representing approximately $150,000 over and above the 4% allowance from the town. Utilities have gone up 22% since FY '23, an increase of $126,000. Transportation costs too has increased significantly. Our children's education should not suffer to cover these types of cost increases. Our students' access to foreign language instruction in middle school should not be on the chopping block. Restorative justice programs should be preserved. Many of the proposed cuts would likely result in further enrollment decline in our school district, further exasperating budget challenges. The decision to dedicate 10 and 1/2% of property tax receipts to pay for capital projects is squeezing operating budgets and will have long-term lasting impact on our school system. I would also note that the amount of additional funding being requested by the regional schools is similar to the amount you agreed to pay in interest on the temporary borrowings, the bond anticipation notes to front the Jones Library share of the expansion project over and above the town share of the project. Please find the funds to cover these costs so we do not have to lose teachers to pay for it. We cannot afford to lose more students to charter in private schools. We need to remain competitive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, Athena.
Amber Cano-Martin. Hi, everybody. My name is Amber Cano-Martin, and I am an Amherst resident. I live in District 2. I have two children in the Amherst Public Schools. I'm here tonight, a little congested, to talk to you about the school budget. So a couple of weeks ago, the Regional School Committee restored about 15 positions, teaching positions to the regional schools budget that otherwise would have been lost based on the superintendent's proposed budget. So these cuts were gonna come from things like the World Language Program in the middle school, the Restorative Justice Coordinator at the high school, someone who's really highly trusted and good at working with students and families, and really helps out some of the most vulnerable kids in our district, paraeducators who help kids who have special education needs. So we were basically coming from some of the most vulnerable in order to balance the budget. And I think it was clear to a lot of us there, to the unions, to the parents, to everyone, that this budget proposal was totally unacceptable. You can't run a school that way. You know, you can't take the money away from the people that are actually working with the students, right? Like the direct support staff that works with students is the absolute worst way to balance a budget. And I'm so happy that the Regional School Committee did its job and went ahead and restored those teaching positions. Even though that leaves us with about $800,000 that we need to make up in the gap, I believe that it's worth it. And if we want to live up to our values around education and the importance of public schools and public education, we need you all to find the funds to cover that gap. It's really, really important and crucial. People come into this town for the schools. I bought my house here for the schools. I'm sure many parents did. And you guys do have the money. Like Tony mentioned, the capital budget and how that's squeezing our operating budgets. This can't continue. I don't have children in the middle school yet, but I'm not sure what's gonna be left for them.
We need you to.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Nina Mankin, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Nina Mankin, and I live at 91 Summer Street in North Amherst. I have a child who's in sixth grade at Wildwood, and I'm also writing about, or calling in, zooming in about the budget. Our family has lived in Amherst for nearly six decades, and in that time, we've witnessed our school district go from one of the best in the state to its current state as average in the state, a little above average. And I'm deeply grateful for all of your work. I know how hard it is to do this job. Most of you are volunteers, and those in town who are also, who are working in a paid capacity have to balance budgets. I understand this. But I question the current ethos that I see in our community and that I also see in our country that thinks that average is acceptable and average is less and less impressive. And when I say that, I very much hope I'm not heard as talking about privileged people, but about all of our students, that excellence must be exhibited on all levels of our education system and that that is our, not only our value system, but our highest goal. So above all, I'm asking you not to accept the status quo and to move heaven and earth to show our children that we hold to a value of giving them everything that we can. And I also ask you to look at the savings you're going to see, we're gonna see from these new schools in ways that other people have talked about the costs costing us now and to bring some of those savings forward by tapping into our reserve funds. Thank you so much for all your time.
Thank you for your comments, Nina. Back to the room.
Allegra Clark. Hi, my name's Allegra Clark. I'm a resident of District 2. I am a parent of a Wildwood student. And I'm a graduate of Amherst High School, and I graduated in 2003 when we were number two in the state. So I have fond memories of the school. I also moved back here because of the school system. When my child was born, I knew that this was a great place to raise a family, so we came back here. So I think this is the first time I've been in front of the town council asking to approve the budget that the Regional School Committee is putting forward to you because it's one that does not include devastating cuts. It in fact restores the cuts that were proposed. So I think that we need to be bold and brave, and we need to find the funds. I think there's reserves could be a possibility, especially if some of the planned energy savings at the new elementary school will come forward. Hopefully, they could be replenished in some way. I know there are ARPA funds, and there was a presentation at the last town council meeting about how they are possibly going to be used. But I think that in terms of child mental health, that is a big byproduct of the pandemic. And seeing the Restorative Justice Coordinator positions be cut really would have a negative impact on students and their mental health. If you look at the tape of the last school committee meeting, there were some students that spoke about the importance of that program to them. So I think that's important, that the youth themselves have identified that as a really important thing in the school and a really important person to them in the school, who's also an Amherst alum. So I think, I think that we have some possibilities for funding, and we should take them because our students deserve it.
Thank you, Allegra. Deborah Ferrera, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I'm Deborah Ferrera. I'm not gonna say my address because, you know, even though I'm all about First Amendment, but I've heard some of the hateful things that others have said in the past at these meetings. And so I'm very afraid to say my address. But anyway, I'm co-chair on the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee, but today, the opinions are my own. I'm a parent. I have a child in the middle school. And then my oldest son went through the public school system. And as the other folks who have already talked about the school system, you know, I wanna also talk about that. I'm calling to ask that the town council fully fund the amount that our school committee is asking for in order to avoid the cuts to teaching positions. If the cuts go through our most vulnerable students who will be impacted, which include BIPOC students, special education students, students who need the mental health support in our schools, our language programs, and many more marginalized student populations that these teachers serve. I'm hoping that you all see the importance of this and won't let that happen. If the funding does not go through, one of the positions being proposed to be cut is the restorative justice position that is held by a black male teacher who is doing an excellent, and I say that again, excellent job, as well as it serves to educate our students with different ways to approach resolving problems as opposed to punishment. This position stems the adverse effects of discipline on BIPOC students. Hope you do the right thing, like the school committee did, because they hurt us. And I hope you all hear us today and all subsequent days because we're gonna continue to let you all know how much this is important and send a message to all our children that they matter. And second, I just wanna urge the town manager to dispress the ARPA funds fairly by including a dispressment to the Black Business Association of Amherst area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Back to the room.
Lamiko McGee.
Good evening. I'm here to support the Regional School Committee and requesting that you put the money back into the school budget. When we look into the future 10 to 20 years from now, what do we wanna see? Do we want highly educated residents, exceptional public schools, and a thriving community, beneficiaries of the education provided because we value our schools now? Or will another picture be painted? Flumining property values, reduction in high school graduation, residents trying to get by, not academically strong enough to attend university, not being able to get the skills they need to get to the next level? Will we see a floundering community suffering from the decisions that we make right now? Our future is in our youth. We must invest in them, and they'll show a return to our community. The Regional School Strategic Plan has committed the district also to greater diversity and dismantling white supremacy. We cannot continue this work without, with the deep budget cuts. For our last hire, they will also be our first fired. And we know those are educators of color, our staff of color. Do we value our students? If so, let's give them the education they deserve. I believe we are obligated to provide our students with an education, a well-rounded education. That means we keep world language, the arts, restorative practices, counseling, special education services, everything they need because we love them and want them to thrive. We want this community to thrive. These cuts won't heal easily. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pat Unabakku, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
Good evening. Can people hear me?
We can, Pat.
My name is Pat Unabakku, District 2. The Chair for Black Business Association of Amherst Area. I am speaking on behalf of my group. So I was cruising the Our Town website a couple of days ago. And how ironic that Our Town has launched kindness campaign, but our town manager, town council, finance committee have not shown kindness and empathy to my group, BBAA, regarding ARPA funds distribution. I want to remind the town manager regarding his conversation with Representative Jim McGovern in July of 2023. Rep. McGovern made a phone call to our town manager at the request of my group members after he met with my group at my place of business in Hadley. And Rep. McGovern got back to me and said that he has spoken to the town manager, urging him to allocate some of the ARPA funds to black businesses. So I just want to say this publicly, and it has not happened. We will keep, continue to advocate, even if it involves protests. We're not going anywhere. I want to conclude by supporting what everybody else has said about school budget. You can find the money. Reduce police budgets. Use some of the ARPA funds.
Please conclude your comments.
Ella Stalker. Hello, my name is Ella Stalker. I'm a resident of North Hampton, and I'm the librarian at Amherst Regional High School. Whatever comments I do not finish, my colleague Amy Coleman will pick up when she speaks next. Last month, the department heads, of which I am one, at Amherst Regional High School were asked to speak to the Regional School Committee about how budget cuts would impact current and future students at the high school. We are grateful for the advocacy of our school committee in passing a higher budget that would prevent these initially proposed cuts. But we want to make sure that you are aware of how those cuts would have impacted us or will impact us if you do not find the appropriate funds for our schools. These cuts impact our individual departments in specific ways, but all of our work is fundamentally interconnected. Collective cuts across departments diminish the culture and spirit of the school in ways that are hard to quantify, but no less essential. We know as experienced educators that these changes put students who struggle at greater risk imperil our ability to provide enrichments for our most academically advanced students and widen the cracks for students who are on the bubble by removing effective interventions. Among the proposals put forward was the option to significantly reduce the overall amount of release time for department heads. This limits the amount of time available for writing and managing significant grants, managing staff and special programs, developing curriculum, all while increasing teaching loads. This also impacts other teachers because when teachers and department heads increase their teaching loads, other teachers are bumped into part-time positions. It is very difficult to retain the same level of experience and exceptional teachers for faculty who are qualified to teach full-time elsewhere but can only read a part-time position in Amherst. Indeed, there are Indeed, there are current open positions that have been open all year at the high school. Staffing reductions are also proposed in guidance at a time when student mental health and emotional needs have never been higher. The lower budget would also reduce, eliminate or fundamentally alter successful interventions such as the restorative justice program or prep academy. These programs ensure that we can meet the needs of vulnerable students. History has shown us when we cut Tier Two interventions, increased class sizes and reduced guidance. I'll conclude right now. These result in higher costs to the districts over time when students end up needing and qualifying for special ed.
Thank you.
Amy Kalman.
Good evening, my name's Amy Kalman, I'm a speech language pathologist at the high school. I'm a parent of an alum of Amherst High and also a 10th grader. And I forget if I mentioned, I live in Amherst, I've lived here for many years. So let's begin. All departments are impacted by proposed cuts of two FTE positions in special education. I'm a speech language pathologist, so those are my students and my colleagues, as well as par educator positions, particularly through the reduction or elimination of COTEC courses. These courses pair a special education teacher with a general education teacher, enabling more students to access general education classes and inclusion. The loss of these courses, when combined with larger class sizes, will reduce the accessibility and availability of both introductory and advanced courses. There are also wholesale cuts to programs at the middle school that will dramatically impact how courses are sequenced and taught at the high school, most especially in performing arts, dance and world language through the gutting of the middle school language and dance programs. The retirement of the computer science teacher at the high school will also illuminate computer science classes at the high school in this era. These cuts reduce the attractiveness and competitiveness of the town of Amherst against our peer communities and charter schools and limit our students' opportunities to express themselves and discover their passions. We retain students in our district from leaving for charter or private schools because of the depth and quality of our electives and the variety of offerings in our core curriculum. The cuts across elective departments in languages, core subject areas, in guidance or in interventions, in co-teaching, in departmental leadership, all these are devastating on their own. Collectively, they are catastrophic. We love our students, our colleagues and the communities we serve. It's exhausting that on top of doing our job year after year, we also have to fight for a budget that would fully or even adequately provide them with the kind of schools they deserve.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks.
Michelle Prindle, please.
Good evening, I'm a resident of South Amherst, I have three children in the public schools. I have one child who is on the autism spectrum, receiving special education services through our schools and I'm here to ask you to approve the school budget. Today I want to make clear to you the situation at the middle school. Our eldest child is an eighth grader at the Amherst Middle School. The current physical state of the middle school is unacceptable. Last fall, a high-volume rainstorm caused ceiling tiles to collapse in six academic classrooms, rendering them unsafe for learning. Our son is a musician in the school's orchestra and choir. In January, on the eve of the eighth grade concert, another rainstorm caused water to accumulate above the ceiling of the auditorium. Black sludgy water filled, flooded the auditorium from the ceiling and from beneath the stage. The students who had remained after school for pizza and a pre-concert rehearsal found themselves assisting school custodians in mopping the disgusting black water from the floors before guests could enter the auditorium. On March 23rd, our two younger children performed in Lion King Junior with Starlight's Youth Theater. An ice and rainstorm overnight and on the morning of the 23rd again caused flooding and water to rain down from the ceiling of the auditorium during both performances. My parents and in-laws from Connecticut were in attendance and they were shocked at the condition of our middle school auditorium. This is a venue that is unsuitable for children to be learning and performing in. I have pictures here to show you about the state of the auditorium during those performances. And this is not the only example of schools in our town being unfit for learning. In a town such as Amherst, which pledges to value the education, value education equity and diversity, it is an absolute embarrassment that our schools are in such failing condition and yet both funding costs are continually proposed, funding cuts. I urge you to find the money to fully fund the town and the regional district's school budget. It is also your responsibility to engage UMass and Amherst College to make real meaningful financial contributions to this town. Our students deserve better and it is your job to do better for them. Thank you for your time. This is just a picture so you can see what it looked like while people were visiting.
Next is Kathleen Mitchell.
Next to the lights that water was pouring down from in the auditorium at the middle school.
Thank you, your time is up. Kathleen Mitchell?
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Mitchell, I'm a resident of District Five in South Amherst and have two children in the Amherst schools who will enter the middle school in the next two years. I'm here tonight to ask the town council to prioritize our children by fully funding the regional school's budget and I wanna speak specifically about two programs at arms. If forced to make cuts to the world language program, middle school students would get insufficient hours of instruction to move beyond the beginner level and would have to start their chosen language all over again in ninth grade. There would be little chance of reaching the AP level in a world language. This would be an unfortunate outcome for a community that has demonstrated its belief in the value of language acquisition and diversity by supporting a bilingual program at the elementary level. If the regional school's budget is not fully funded, the restorative justice program would be eliminated at a time when we know that adolescents are struggling with social and emotional skills and need this type of support. There has been so much talk in the community about how crucial it is that there is healing at arms and that the culture of the school improves, but this will not happen by magic. As a community, we either care about arms or we don't. I think that if you choose to fund this budget, you will find a significant amount of community support and many families and individuals willing to partner with you to roll up their sleeves and advocate for funding and think creatively about solving this ongoing problem. I have often heard members of this council talk about the importance of families in Amherst, of ensuring that our housing and zoning makes it possible for families to live here. But families also need thriving public schools, not just at the elementary level in the form of a new building, but also in the form of an adequately staffed, high-quality middle and high school. Many of you in various contexts have spoken about the value you place on our public schools. You have mentioned how your own families chose Amherst or because of the quality of the schools or how your own children thrive during their education here. All we are asking is that our children have the same opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I think it's May Vicente, I'm sorry, I can't read your handwriting. Is it May? Mari, thank you.
Yeah, my name tends to throw people off. My name is Mari Vicente and I'm a Spanish teacher at Amherst Regional High School. And I wanna tell you that the cuts in the language curriculum that were instituted at the middle school about 10 years ago cost us a little more than half a year in academic achievement for our students. On top of that, the pandemic cost close to a year, another year in academic achievement and the block schedule is absolutely horrible for language teaching. So the students that I have now in intermediate Spanish, Spanish III, are about a year and a bit behind of where they used to be a few years ago. So it's become really difficult to prepare students for the advanced placement in Spanish, which is one of the crowning jewels of the high school. And the caring proposed cuts will even further delay our students' achievements in world language. These cuts translate into having the students de facto start their language careers at the high school instead of at the middle school. And that is also on top of we being the only country that starts language teaching as late as 12 years old, just in time when the brain, the part of the brain that deals with language starts to shrink. It's still possible, but it's not as, but what most countries do. So as a result of this extra even further cuts, kids would only have four years of their chosen language. At that point, it would definitely be impossible to achieve the advanced placement course. Furthermore, our district recently started dual-language, language program at Fort River. And how would this
Your time is up.
face with the dual-language program?
Thank you.
Please fund the world language. Thank you.
Olivia Blake.
Hello, my name is Olivia Blaze, I'm a resident of Northampton and an Amherst educator. I teach Latin at the middle and one class at the high school and I'm here today to ask you to please support our school committee's ask and fully fund their budget. Our students love our classes, speaking as a world language teacher. It's the high point of some of their days, it's a chance for them to make choices in their education, to learn about how to communicate with others, how to share about themselves, how to think about themselves as citizens in the world. To reduce their time when they are most eager, enthusiastic and ready to soak up that knowledge would be a real shame. A couple of weeks ago, at the regional school committee meeting, many, many members of the public came and advocated against gutting our program and the school committee listened and restored our positions in the budget. I ask you to support our community and fund the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
William Roundy.
Hello, everybody. My name is William Roundy, I'm the department head of world languages at the high school. My colleagues have made great comments about what we're losing with the budget already, so I'm just gonna make a few separate points. The cuts, if we cut deeply, are not just extraneous programs that feel like add-ons to some people. For instance, we're deeply cutting the high school science department, which is core academics. And even with the budget that the school committee passed, we're cutting pretty deeply, almost to the bone. We're losing central office positions, custodial positions and other things that aren't directly impacting students, but are impacting our building pretty deeply. So what the school committee is asking for is, I think, what we should do. I don't think they are asking too much for a strong opening bargaining, bargaining position or anything. It's already pretty tough. The mood's pretty bad in the schools right now. When we started talking about these budget cuts, I was pretty devastated and I'm a normally like pretty happy guy, but I'd have to say I haven't been happy in about a month. And people don't show up in numbers like this unless you're really hitting a breaking point of some kind. To get this many people politically activated is really a sign that something is wrong. And I'd like you to really seriously consider what we're asking for. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Georgia Malcolm.
You know, I'm never at a loss for words, but I'm so tired. I just put my name down because I really wanted to acknowledge the school committee for advocating and putting the money back in. I mean, I really, you know, I would say to Mika back there, I'm like, I'm gonna say the opposite, don't approve it. Because what is, what is it gonna mean for you guys? You know, unfortunately, this is statistics, right? The demographics of the schools are changing. It's almost, I mean, in terms of, when you combine all the people of color, it's probably almost pretty close to white kids. And I think, without you guys even knowing it, it's just some kind of, you know, it's kind of racism, this kind of white supremacy. And I'm not trying to insult anybody, but it's just ingrained because I, I go through it with my colleagues in the school system. And, you know, you're not seeing, I think the school committee has a vision, right? Because you're living in Amherst, you wanna put up this $40 million library. You know, yes, we're gonna cut the schools and we're kinda raising the flags saying, hey, you know, everything is gonna be not great. And you guys really aren't paying attention. And I say, fine, don't put the money in and see what happens in a couple of years because Amherst is gonna be like this garbage pan. It's white, you paint it pretty on the outside and on the inside it's filthy. So I mean, I'm not going to beg you, you guys figure it out, you're elected to do the right thing. The school committee has done the right thing, but I am just saying, don't do it and see what happens.
Thank you for your comments.
Irene LaRoche.
Hi, Irene LaRoche, I've been teaching at Amherst Mill School since 2003. Please support the school committee's budget. With the wide variety of students, each of our program meets different needs. The ARMS program is already operating under substandard conditions due to previous budget cuts in recent years. The ARMS program has four core subject areas organized into teams with a special education teacher. These core classes are heterogeneous with a wide variety of needs serving students on IEPs and 504s in an inclusion model. The core subject classes have experienced a 20% increase in class size in the last few years as core teaching positions have been cut. These cuts accompanied changes in special education support. We no longer have general education paraprofessionals assigned to each team who used to be able to provide support in those classes. Run result is that special education students who need support are moved then to one core class with one special ed teacher, which tips the balance of that class to create de facto tracking. The general education math and ELA classes in seventh grade are 30% IEPs and the general education social studies and science are over 40% high-need students. Each part of our school program is integral in having a high-quality education and meets the needs of complex learners. English Language Arts, ELL, Counseling, Restorative Justice, World Language, Exploratories, all of them are essential. A student with a reduced experience in exploratory will struggle to engage in required core classes. A student in an exploratory class who might have a conflict with another student may not be able to capably resolve that conflict without a restorative justice coordinator. A student who has reduced world language classes will have a harder time accepting their role as a global citizen, which is a hallmark of our social studies curriculum. The connections are limitless, each part of the program is essential. We help students build the skills and the content they need to understand themselves and their world, a world that is connected, diverse and interdependent. Please restore the budget that serves the whole child and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Pat Nytupski.
Good evening, my name's Pat Nytupski, I'm from Holyoke.
Please move to the mic, please.
I'm from Holyoke, but I am a specialized math teacher at the middle school and before that I was a special ed par educator at Fort River for seven years. You have heard from much more eloquent and smarter colleagues than I, so I'm gonna keep it short. But we are holding it together with duct tape and baling wire at the middle school. You are potentially considering a budget that will put the money back in for schools. I think that's important. Right now, you all have a choice to make because we don't get to decide. But you can either take from and cut from our most vulnerable students or you can choose to build them up. I know it's a hard decision, we're doing a lesson right now on balancing equations, but you all have to find the money somewhere else, otherwise the other side of the equation is cut services. And I don't know that we're gonna make it if we cut more services. I don't know that they're gonna make it if we don't cut more, if we keep cutting services. So, you know, I hope you make the right choice and thank you for your time.
Thank you for joining us.
Benzo Connor.
Vincent O'Connor, 175.
Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street. I've distributed to the council a proposal for a Refugee and Asylum Applicant Resettlement Commission in writing. And I look forward to meeting with the appropriate committee of the council to discuss this matter. On the matter before us, as councillors, you are operating in a political structure developed in medieval Europe to govern its illiterate rabble. We are not in Europe. This is 2024, and your constituents are not illiterate rabble. In a prepared statement at a previous meeting in March, a councillor spoke of the need of time for dialogue. The dialogue this community needs between the council and its citizens and its school committee is not just listening for two minutes, but engaging in real discussion. At the finance committee, not just having a presentation and then having people have to listen to people talk about things that maybe they have gotten wrong. But the same thing should happen at your April 24th or 25th public hearing. I think it is important for not only the substance of understanding, the appearance of understanding by listening, but the substance of understanding by having dialogue at the finance committee and your public hearing, so that we, so that whatever decision you make is a decision that the public will feel is an informed decision as the result of dialogue between you and the school committee, its professional staff people and the public.
Thank you for your comment.
That's everyone on the register.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. After that, we will be moving to a presentation about the regional school budget and some discussion and a vote to refer it to the finance committee. Let me begin with the consent agenda. It's pretty straightforward to move the following items in the printed motions they're under and approve those items as a single unit. 9A1, approval of extension of temporary police chief appointment. 11A, adoption of March 4, 2024, special town council meeting minutes. Is there a second? Is there anybody that would like anything removed? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. We're going to move on to a vote. I'll begin with Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councillor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Councillor Walker.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to point out for clarification purposes that the full, this tonight, we were approving the full set of minutes for March 4th. When we held our meeting on the 13th, we were only accepting the record of the meeting from the time, from a certain time in the meeting to the end of the meeting. You had your hand up, Andy.
Yes, I don't know if Athena wants to report this, but there was an amendment to the minutes made at my request.
Yes.
There was a correction on page three. I corrected the error and reposted the minutes, so the minutes that are in the packet now have been corrected.
Okay, thank you. We have no resolutions or proclamations tonight. We have no presentation or discussion. The reason that the Amherst Pelham Regional School Budget appears under action items is because eventually it will be an action item. We are going to begin with interim school superintendent. Doug, you can come in. Good evening, Dr. Slaughter.
Good evening.
And we also then have comments from Regional School Committee Chair Sarah Best Kenny and Amherst School Committee Chair Sarah Marshall. I do want to note that both in the room and in the audience on Zoom are various members of the school committee as well, of the regional school committee as well as the Amherst School Committee. Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm just gonna take you through the budget a little bit and the process we went through to get to the budget that the school committee voted and has submitted to the town for approval. Let's go to the next slide, please. So what we usually do is, as part of our process, is we make estimates for the coming fiscal year on what's called level services, which is to take our best estimates of what we are doing currently and trying to project that forward into the new fiscal year. So for staff, that involves steps and colas. We project those for the coming year with the same level of FTE. We look at our various expenses and the ones we know. We try to estimate what those will look like for the coming year. And so with that estimate of level services, you know, the budget would be $36,496,441. And that utilizes $500,000 in ESAR funds, and it's about 8.29% above the fiscal '24 budget. Really, the big things that are driving are cost increases from the current year to next year are reduction in the number of ESAR funds available. So the current budget's being supported by over $1.1 million. And so a reduction of $500,000 of ESAR funds will have a 650,000, more than $650,000 decrease in funding that's supporting the budget. You know, we're a people business. Most of our costs are driven by employees and the benefits that they have. And so that's a pretty significant impact on our budget year over year. You know, in the ballpark of 80, 85% of our costs are related to employees. So when we have things like health insurance go up close to 10%, it's a pretty significant, you know, expense in our budget. And then, you know, the inflation that's been persistent over the last couple of years is continuing to impact our budget in a pretty significant way. And so it pushes those numbers higher. And so we see that that large increase of just under 8.3% overall. We use an alternative assessment method for the regional schools. Just to give you a quick background on that, there's a statutory method. Any other method that we use as a regional school district is called an alternative assessment method. We use an alternative assessment method. We've worked with the four towns in the regional school district to try to come to an agreement about how we assess each of the towns, their portion of the cost. The current method we have uses a five-year rolling average of what's called the minimum local contribution, as well as a five-year average of the student population. And then we have an additional sort of guardrail that we've been applying over the last couple of years of 4% to sort of set the maximum amount that any given town could increase or decrease in a given year. But if we look at that revenue, you know, using that assessment method we've used the last couple of years and other sources of revenue from Chapter 70 to regional transportation reimbursement to interest, et cetera. The gap between our level services budget and our funding using that assessment method is almost $1.7 million. And so, you know, we set about, you know, trying to find what it was we could adjust or change or reduce from our budget in order to meet that number. If you go to the next slide, please. And so we create a list, as we see up on the screen now, of adjustments, additions and reductions to try to meet that number. So the first section at the top of this is our adjustments. And some of these are, you know, refinements in estimates for expenses from where we started. So we start this process back in November. We're making our best guesses as what we think our health insurance is gonna cost us. We make our adjustments to what we think our support from or cost for utilities are gonna be, et cetera, et cetera. And as we go through the process, we try to refine those numbers and make adjustments accordingly. There's several things you'll see on here where it shows a negative, which is the parentheses around the FTEs. And generally with that, what we're doing is we are shifting the cost from appropriation type funding to revolving fund type funding. There are opportunities for a regional school district to have revolving funds, to hold resources and support certain programs. There are very specific rules about what revolving funds can or cannot be funded with. And the purpose of those funds are very specifically defined. But there are a few programs that we run that allow us to collect money and then use it to support the programs. And so over the last couple of years, with ESAR funding being available, we've made a decided effort to push and/or retain, I should say, funds in our revolving accounts so that we'd have them available to us in a year like this. And so, for example, we, you know, if we take in students to some of our programs in special education, we have a tuition revolving fund that we can, that we collect those tuitions from those other districts, and then we use it to support the program. So you have to, with a revolving fund, if it's allowed, then you have to use it for the program that it's supporting. And so in this case, we're going to shift and put four staff onto that revolving fund. And so it takes them off of our appropriated funds. And so it reduces the burden on the towns to meet that expense with assessed money. And as you see, there are a couple of other places where we have shifts of custodial staff. When people rent our facility, we charge them for the use, and then we use those funds to help support our custodial staff. And then the last one is we have an intensive needs program. Again, that one also collects tuition. It's the same revolving fund as the one at the top there. But both of those are able to support some of the staffing that's in those programs. And so those adjustments are ones we make that don't, although it looks like we're cutting 4.7 people, we're actually shifting them off of the appropriated part of the budget. So those are staff that are still gonna work for us. They're just gonna get paid from a different resource than our appropriated funds. In the section under budget reductions, that's when we're actually taking things out and doing less things. And so, you know, there's a number of things. We looked at our central administration. We're making some reductions there. We've got some smaller adjustments where we're taking out just some expenses to try to meet that number of almost 1.7 million. We're reducing some of the professional development. With the custodial staff, the circumstance there is we added staff during the pandemic. We're phasing into an area where we don't need as many staff as we've had. And so we're able to reduce our staff in that area. And then you get into the much more significant changes, where we're really having to reduce a significant number of staff relative to trying to meet this target of almost 1.7 million. And, you know, when we do this process, I work with the administration in the buildings to go through and think about this and work. You know, we try to leverage retirements and open positions and also just, you know, what programming are our kids signing up for as far as classes? And what things aren't they signing up for and other ways to be efficient by virtue of trying to leverage our schedule to our advantage? And, you know, there's some other restructuring of how many departments we have. So department heads have release time. And so if we have fewer departments, that's fewer people getting release time to do department support work. You know, that does have an impact. I mean, all of these things have impacts on what we can and do offer to the kids. There's some changes in the middle section there where it talks about our summer programming. Because of how we've shifted our schedule over the last few years, there's opportunity to provide summer school in a little different way. So again, that's a change to how we'll probably do our summer support work and credit recovery type work. There's opportunities during the school year for kids to make that up. And so the need for summer school is much, much less. And so it's a much more sort of focused program that we're expecting to run this summer. But then you see the next section where we talk about middle school changes. The clerical staff reduction is, in addition, we did this year to help out a little bit with the changes to the middle school and the administrative structure we've got in place this year. And then staff turnover is a generic sort of category that we look at. It's, you know, when we reduce the number of staff, there are associated costs that go with staff, like some of them have health insurance, some of them don't, you know, and so on. And there are other reductions just separate from just salary that we can apply to the budget. You know, so in speaking with the, you know, presenting the school committee, getting public comment, the school committee tasked me with, you know, adjusting this and not making this level of reductions. And effectively, you'll go to the next slide, please, to essentially not have the teaching and paraprofessional positions reduced from the budget. To do that, it's about 15 staff, a little over 15 staff, or $941,975 in expense that get added back to the budget if we do that. And so the resulting reduction from a level services budget, instead of being 1. almost 7 million, is about $750,000, or 747,896 to be overly precise there. And so if we go to the next slide, this is sort of what happens to the adds and cuts or additions, adjustments, reductions that we have. And so what I've done here is the exact same slide as earlier, except the places where we had teaching staff or paraprofessional staff, we've zeroed those out, and so those don't reduce our budget. And that's where you get to a target of the 747, 896 in reductions that we have to make. Now, many of these are ones we would do regardless, you know, if we just don't have an expense or we can project that we don't have an expense, like the reduction in our health insurance cost from our original estimate, that sort of thing. Those are actual real changes. Regardless, we'd want to make that reduction in what we're having in our budget, because we just don't, we're not gonna incur that expense because of the reduction cost from what we were originally projecting. But nonetheless, there's still pretty significant reductions in other areas within the budget, even with this modification from a $1.7 million in cuts to $750,000 worth of cuts. And so if we go to the next slide, please. So what you see on this slide is a summarized, you know, appropriation budget. What we've done in the, in the, not the shaded column all the way to the far right, but in the two columns just preceding that, we have the proposed budget from fiscal '25. That's where we started, before we started doing, you know, sort of additions, reductions, et cetera. And then in the adjusted, we've taken some of those, we've taken those reductions that are spelled out on the previous page and applied them to the areas of the budget and made the adjustments in the budget. And so what the school committee voted at their meeting on the 14th of March was a budget of $35,748,545, which is a little over 6% from the current year. And that's the total, the bottom of the next to last column on the right there. And that's just a little over $2 million of increase in costs from the current fiscal year and its estimates. So the next question is sort of, well, how do we pay for that? What are our resources? What did we assume or what can we assume relative to that? Go to the next slide, please. And so on this slide, this sort of lays out what we think our revenues look like for the coming year. So if you look at the blue columns in particular, so the sort of middle two columns that have a highlight to them, in the, I have to say, the header on that says 100% stat is not truly 100% statutory method. That's the, it's vestigial from when we were transitioning to the method that we're using currently. But more importantly, what you see there is a level services budget, which is the $36,496,441, which is the same one we started with at the beginning of the presentation. Currently, we're projecting our Chapter 70 to be $9,793,627. That increase of 0.78% from the current year, I will say, is actually less than that in some respects. So the Chapter 70 number that's shown in the first column there that says fiscal '24 is what we were projecting and what we voted. What actually happened when the fiscal '24 budget was finalized at the state level, our Chapter 70 number was a little bit higher than that. And so the actual increase, you know, over the actual revenue that we'll receive this year in Chapter 70 is less than 0.78%. But the thing to keep in mind is we've got a $36 million budget, and we're trying to fund a pretty big chunk of it with Chapter 70. And when it goes up by less than 1%, that puts a lot of pressure on our assessment methods and our other sources of revenue to try to cover those costs. So as we look down through the remainder of those revenue sources, we get a transportation reimbursement, because we're a regional school district. That has been, over the last couple of years, strongly, they've been improving the reimbursement rate. We think that's gonna kind of hold steady for this year. Our current year estimate for that is around the $950,000 mark. Our budgeted number for fiscal '24 was lower than that, but I think our actual projected reimbursement for the current year will be closer to 950, and we're gonna hold that steady for fiscal '25. Medicaid reimbursement, about $120,000. We provide services that are eligible for Medicaid. Medicaid reimbursement, about $120,000. We provide services that are eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. So we do certain OTPT speech services that are eligible for Medicaid. And so we apply for that funding and we get that. About $120,000, it's a pretty typical amount from one year to the next. It varies. Charter reimbursement, that's our estimate of what we think we'll get for our brand new students that are in charter. So when a student goes to a charter school, there's a reimbursement as you transition to owning that cost. And so with the regional schools, any seventh grader that's going to a charter school is in their first year relative to us. And so we get about $300,000 in charter reimbursement. That's our estimate of that. What you don't see here, but it's in the expense side of things, is that the cost to us for those charter students, we carry as an expense line, that number's around $2 million, roughly speaking. So, you know, the reimbursement is a transitional funding source from the state to ease you into covering that cost. But charter costs are pretty significant, like out of our resources. Interest revenue, with interest rates being up, and we have, you know, cash on hand for a variety of reasons. And so $32,000 is kind of in the right neighborhood for what kind of interest we earn in the course of a year. E and D, which is, you know, the same as sort of reserves or free cash and stabilization for municipality. We generally budget $280,000 as a contingency. We try not to spend that in the course of a fiscal year. We hold that as in case of emergencies type of funding. But we do have additional funds available to us that we do leverage from one year to the next. And so we've got $600,000 of that funding budget. And the way we get E and D is the same way the town gets reserves. In other words, if you are, you know, when you finish your fiscal year, if you're under budget, that falls into the sort of reserve category. One difference is that in a regional school district, there's a maximum amount that you can retain in E and D, and that's 5% of your operating budget. So we have some obligation to use those resources and not sort of stack them up and hold them. So we're supposed to spend that funding in a timely way to support our budgets. And so we try to carry that from one year to the next and use a little bit each year. And so when we finish under budget one year, it helps support that E and D for a subsequent year. And it helps, you know, sort of smooth out our funding picture a little bit from one year to the next. But the totality of those other sources of funds, besides assessments to the town, it's a little over $12 million. We subtract that from our 36,496,441. And so the amount to be assessed to the four towns falls in the 24,42814. And because of, you know, either no change in those estimates for revenue or small changes in those estimates for revenue, that's why that increase from fiscal '24 to this year is 11.62%. So it's a pretty, pretty big increase to cover the costs that we're anticipating. And so if we use the assessment method and, you know, with the five-year rolling average of minimum local contribution and the remainder of that amount to be assessed based on a five-year rolling average of students, this series of numbers, the 19,706,938 for the town of Amherst, would be the sort of full assessment you would have to bear in order to hold us at level services. And likewise, you can see the impact on the other three towns. You know, in the most recent years, we've had a set of guardrails of 4% as a maximum increase. And so as I started in the presentation to do that, we would have to cut about 1.7 million. The regional school committee asked me to restore the teaching and paraprofession positions. And so that's a much smaller amount of reduction. And so the guardrails of 4% were going to support that. So essentially, I modified the guardrails in order to meet that level of reduction that we had been able to identify, that it did not involve teaching and paraprofessional positions. So that just shy of $750,000. And so that creates an increase above the current year's assessment of about 8.2% for every one of the four towns. And so that's a little more than double the increase from what we spoke about in February. But that is the budget that was passed by the regional school committee on the 14th. The final slide, and I'll do this quickly just as a reference, and so if you, that last slide, is the capital projection. So capital is another part of the budget. The regional school committee reduced the projected projects for the coming year. And so the debt authorization that they went through was a much, much smaller. They took $300,000 out of that. Doesn't impact fiscal '25, but it would have an impact on fiscal '26. Those numbers are not shown in the chart at the bottom of the page there where it has the assessment. The fiscal '24 and '25 numbers are accurate. '26 and above have not been modified relative to this smaller capital project and debt authorization that was approved by the regional school committee. So they, you know, were trying to be forward-thinking and saying, all right, we're going to push out some of these projects. We can hold off on those. We'll take a little less debt on and potentially have a positive impact on some of the subsequent years of the capital planning from a financial request in assessment. So the assessments for capital are in the column labeled fiscal '25. Those have been consistent throughout the budget season. But I did want to share those with you. But the larger conversation is probably much more about the operating budget and the assessments there and the additions, reductions, et cetera, that match with that. So I think I'll stop there because I blitzed through that really quickly. I'm sorry if I went too quickly, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has. This is very familiar to me, and so I go through it relatively rapidly. And I'm sorry if I skimmed over something that wasn't familiar to anybody or has provoked some questions. I'm happy to answer anything.
So why don't you just stay right where you are. And Sarah Bes, why don't you come up? This is Sarah Bes. Kenny, Sarah Bes is the chair of the regional school committee.
Hi, y'all. Okay, so Doug, we asked Doug to go back through.
Please, yes, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, so our original budget that was presented, which we dubbed the Tuesday budget in our meeting for clarity, we reviewed and many of the cuts that were proposed were student-facing and greatly going to change the student experience in our schools. And as the school committee, our job is to approve a budget that, you know, supports our students the best we can and honors our district mission, which includes, you know, high-quality education, multicultural, multi-ethnic, and floristic societies, and keeping our schools as healthy and robust as we can. And so we asked the business office to put back in the student-facing positions. We are still making cuts that still affect students. It still includes two FTE from central office, two janitorial staff, and one clerical. And then as Dr. Slaughter presented in the last slide, we reduced our capital, proposed capital projects.
Okay, all right. Just take a moment. And Sarah Marshall, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you. I'm Sarah Marshall, member of the Amherst and regional school committees. My role is chair of the Amherst school committee, however, doesn't, I'm just another member of the regional committee. All the speakers during the public comment part of this meeting were spot-on, very articulate in outlining the damage that might be caused, will be caused, will see, we hope will not be caused by the cuts that would be needed to limit the assessment increases to 4%. But I'll give my written remarks. Education has long been a priority and economic driver for the Amherst area. A significant proportion of the area population lives here specifically because of the educational offerings, not only at the college and university level, but at the elementary and secondary levels as well. Unfortunately, the ability of the regional schools to offer the high-quality programming that so many people demand and that our children surely deserve is threatened by inadequate funding, chiefly at the state level, as Dr. Slaughter just pointed out. And after years of whittling away at programs and staff, at administrators and classes, we were faced this winter with the prospect of devastating cuts amounting to $1.6 million, cuts that cannot be made without significant changes to student learning and staff responsibilities. We implore you to fund the budget that we have submitted, even though it will require significantly more funding than was offered at the four towns meeting. We know it's a big ask. But parents, students, educators, and staff tell us loudly and clearly that a shrinking and mediocre program is unacceptable. Please also understand that our regional schools are in competition with private and charter schools, and that more students will go elsewhere if they need to, to get the language and music instruction, the arts, the counseling, the academic supports that are no longer available at the Amherst middle or high schools, and that they take significant taxpayer funds with them. Please strengthen and do not weaken our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the three of you can just sit there in the hot seat, okay? We're going to start with comments, questions from the council. I want to remind people that this is just the beginning of the conversation for this council with the regional school budget. We have a hearing scheduled on the 25th at 6:30. It will be totally virtual. It's a meeting of the finance committee that other members of the council may join in. With that, and our vote tonight is to refer the budget to the finance committee, where it will rest until they come back to the council with their recommendation. And then, as each of you knows, then it becomes a decision-making process across four municipalities. And that involves three town meetings and our town council. So we're, again, just at the beginning of that process. So with that, Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to focus on two elements that Doug went through quickly. And I know this is more long-term, but I'm also thinking we should be putting pressure on the state. I just did a quick math. If chapter 70 had gone up by 4% rather than less than 1%, it would be another roughly $400,000. I can't understate what the charter formula is doing to devastate our schools, and it's year after year. We're sending a net, Doug showed the amount we get off the top, but we're sending a net of over $20,000 for each of the 82 students that leave. We only send 5,000 if they go to another public district school. If we sent 10,000 rather than 5,000, it would be the million you're asking for every year, year after year. So I think we need to organize a, with our state legislatures, a change in the formula, but more immediately, chapter 70, we talked about the fair share amendment. Very little of it went directly into school budgets. A little bit went into some capital for K through 12. We had a discussion about student debt at the college level, but we're vying for the same pot of money. And I think people really need to say that at the most basic level, we need to protect K through 12. And in this case, we're talking about regional, you know, because it's our kids. So I just want to focus on those two because they're such big numbers. You know, on the Amherst side, I was looking at the amount, more money that it would be for Amherst, where we had 4% and this would be 8%. So just calculating that. And we can start to talk about that at the finance committee. It was pointed out by one public comment that we went up to 10.5% on the capital budget. 10.5%, that extra 0.5% rather than 10% is about $400,000. You know, so there's pieces of money that cause pain somewhere else. There's not a little pocket somewhere that we can just dip into. But it's, and Sarah is on the joint capital planning committee, I mean, taking a hard look at what needs to be spent. It might mean we have to relook at our guidelines. So I'll stop there rather than looking at some of the detail because I haven't had a chance to look at the underlying detail. But our two kids went through the middle school and the high school. And I have to tell you, when they hit college, they were so well-prepared. And beyond that, they had this extremely diverse experience of friendships across all these different programs. And I was just, and they're 44 and 40 now, so we're talking about a long time ago. But they look, they treasured the time in our middle school and our high school for what that experience brought to them. And I, as a counselor, would like to have that continue to be an experience in Amherst. So thank you all very much.
Pam Rooney.
Thank you. If I were looking at the chart, which is, it says FY 2025 proposed budget, and it has the payroll accounts and the expense accounts at the top, if maybe we could look at, see that. A couple of basic questions, if someone would take the time to explain how our Amherst vote affects other towns. First question. Second question is, does choice in payment for special ed, it was mentioned a couple of times that we get tuition for special ed and we get tuition for regular ed, choice in. Does choice in for special ed tuition cover the actual cost of special ed education? When I look at, when I look at the, any of the proposed numbers, the payroll accounts for special ed exceed that of regular education. And I don't know how many students are supported in special ed as opposed to regular ed. In the expense accounts, just the top, oh, five or six lines, which is regular education, special ed, other programs, student programs, school administration, central administration, if someone could describe what expense accounts means, it's in the realm of $5 million. So it's really becoming real money. It's, anyway, that's the question. What does that consist of? Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, so I'll try to go through those. So there's a couple of things. So there's school choice, and then there's also tuition in. So for when I was speaking earlier about collecting tuitions from special education students, those are into our specific programs, which is different than school choice. It's an actual placement like we have. There are, you know, some students that we have that we don't have programming for special education purposes, and we will send those kids to what we call out-of-district placements. We are receiving district in a similar way. So when we charge for that, we're trying to estimate when we set up the billing technically with them. We're trying to charge for what we're incurring. Separately, school choice, which is, you know, we are a school choice district. We do accept school choice students. The base amount for any student that's a school choice student is $5,000. If they have special education costs, those are then calculated. And we do a process called school choice claims, where we essentially bill back the districts that send to us. And so we do recover those costs one-to-one. So special education costs definitely, in both of those circumstances, are ones that are covered by those sending districts. See if I can remember all the questions. So, shoot, lost my train of thought.
Other was, how does the Amherst vote affect the other towns?
So the way it works is this, and I'm going to, this is going to get a little technical about how the budget process occurs. So there are really three parts to getting a regional budget passed. There's a capital assessment that all four towns have to agree to. In the operating budget side of things, there's really two pieces to that. There is the assessment method itself, and then there is the actual, you know, sort of numbers, the operating budget itself. And so both of those have to pass for the regional schools to have a budget. Because we use an alternative method, all four towns must agree to that, that alternative method for the budget to pass. So we can have, on the other hand, on just the dollars and cents part of the operating budget, three of the four have to pass it. But with the assessment method, because it's an alternative method, all four must agree to it. So if any one town rejects the assessment method, we don't have a budget. And if two towns reject the sort of numeric part of the budget, that also would have us not be able to have a budget for us not be able to have a budget for the coming year. So that's, so each of the towns has a fair amount of power to reject a budget by virtue of that. You'd ask a little bit about special education costs. So payroll accounts at the top are all about salaries, basically. That's just all salaries up there. Expenses are a variety of different things. Some of it's, you know, instructional supplies. It's, you know, whiteboard markers and workbooks and paper and things of that sort. But it's also things like some of the replacement equipment for phone books or technology that particular kids need. And so in special education, you might have an adaptive type of technology that someone needs. That's in the expense accounts. Sometimes it's for services that we need that we can't provide ourselves. So sometimes we have to contract those out. If we have difficulty either hiring staff that we'd like to have, we'll contract out services. Or if it's something specialized that we don't offer or we don't have or need on a regular basis, we'll often contract out for those services. So it's a whole host of different things that fall into those categories. A little over, you know, probably in the 23, I don't know the number exactly. It used to be more closer to 20, but it's crept up a little bit in recent years. Number, you know, the percentage of our students that have special education needs is about 23% or so. It's not quite to 25%, but it's gone up over the last few years. But special education services are often expensive and they're largely compulsory. In other words, we, when an IEP or an individualized education plan gets written, it's something that's agreed to between the district and the families relative to how best to meet their students' needs so they can access the curriculum. And so it is intended to be the least restrictive form for those students to access curriculum. But it often involves a variety of staff that provide a variety of services depending on the kid and what their needs are. And so it's, it's just on a base level, it's more expensive than kids that don't have IEPs. You know, it just requires a higher level of sophistication and staffing to do that. And sometimes equipment, too. I think I got, hopefully I got all the different pieces you asked about.
Mandy Jo. I'm sorry, Councilor Hanneke.
Thank you. A couple of questions to hopefully take advantage of the fact that we have Sarah Best Kenny, our regional school committee chair here, and two members of our regional school committee because I don't know whether they'll be at finance or not. Does the regional school committee intend that the FY 25 budget as they passed, so the higher one than what we had been looking at, is, do they intend it to be the base for the FY 26 budget and all future budgets? Or would the original one that was $900,000 lower be the base? In other words, is this budget as passed that increases what the four towns were looking at by $900,000, a permanent increase in the budget by $900,000? Or is this a one-year adjustment? I'm going to ask all my questions. They're kind of all related. Why did the regional school committee wait until April to relay their concerns to the four towns through passing a budget higher than what was discussed at any of the four towns meetings and guidance instead of making the case at either the January four towns meeting when we knew 20 positions would need to be cut? Or calling an additional four towns meeting in February or March? What has the regional school committee done over the past three years to strategize for the fiscal cliff that we knew was coming and talked about that is here in FY 25? What did you do to prepare for it? How did you talk about it? And related to that, of the level services budget, the presentation indicated that $600,000 of this quote, 1.7 million reduction or now .8 million reduction is because there is $600,000 less in ESR budget support than there was in the current fiscal year budget. But ESR money wasn't, was always known to not be permanent. So did you have a plan for the loss of that ESR money? I noticed also that $500,000 in the FY 25 budget is ESR money that will not be there at all next year. And where is the strategy for making up that loss to in coming years?
I can answer the first one. So the first question goes around a one-year adjustment or not. You know, if we adopt the budget as passed, so it involves an assessment method of, you know, with guardrails of 8.2%, that essentially sets the base because it is the base of assessment that gets charged to the four communities. So it would, to my mind, be the basis of the budget for the coming fiscal '26. You know, if that additional funding had been asked for in a different way than a potential, you know, sort of external to the budget, then it would be more of a one-time version. So I would suggest it's an adjustment to base.
Thank you.
I would say, I could add, that we did discuss whether to pass a budget with a lower base and ask for one-time extra money that wouldn't then be part of the next year's base. And that did not fly. So I think it's pretty clearly, or it's clear to me, the intent of the committee to just build this right in.
Sarah Best, did you have comments? You speak, please speak to the mic.
Okay, so, yeah. So we have actually, after the four of our people have talked to our four towns, and one of the things we have asked the business office to create and present for us is a three-year look ahead. We'll do exactly what you're asking about. How will this look for our future? And. Sorry.
One of my questions was about four towns meeting. We knew these 20 cuts positions were presented in January's four towns. Why did you wait till April to tell the towns it was unacceptable instead of calling four towns meetings in February or March to discuss this?
I think we didn't know exactly what was going to end up being cut. And so that's why, in addition, in addition to the look ahead that we've asked the business office to do for us, one of the other things is we would like to have another four towns meeting so the four towns can come together and hopefully review the three-year look ahead and, you know, have more discussions about how to not only manage for this year, but also to manage for our future years.
There is a four towns meeting at this point. The tentative date is the 20th of April. That does not answer the question. It just places that piece of information out there. Councilor Hanneke, did you have follow-up?
I guess three-year look ahead looks to the future. One of my questions was, what in the last three years have you done to plan for the cliff that we're in now since we knew it was coming? That might be more for Dr. Slaughter as finance or business, whatever his title was before acting superintendent.
Finance director, essentially. There's a few things we've done. I mean, you know, certainly we knew that this was coming and there's a certain, you know, limit to what we can do. I mean, certainly I hinted at it a little bit, a number of revolving funds. We've intentionally, school choice being another one of those where we've allowed the funding to grow a bit in order to have a little more resource available over the next few years. So our tuition account, which we're using a little bit of this next couple of years, this sort of adjustment section of that adjustments, reductions and adds, you know, we're starting to leverage those resources that we've, I want to say stacked up, but we stacked up over the last couple of years. So we used, you know, so there's a few things there that we've done. And as you'll note from that, you know, the idea being that we can sustain some of that support, you know, for example, the tuition, you know, support is for special education is about $125,000 if you take this sort of top and the bottom. We think we can sustain that for a year or two, and obviously that gives us more time. You know, we're sort of spreading this out over a longer period of time to not make it as abrupt, but nonetheless, it's still a pretty abrupt change. To be honest, in the fiscal '24 budget, it was, you know, we would have had to have leveraged less ESR funds to, in the current year, to make next year not look quite so bad. But then we'll also have, you know, as you noted, a $500,000 sort of difficulty to overcome when we start to plan for fiscal '26. So I think there's a few, you know, there's a few things we've looked at with regard to that. We, you know, we have limited tools to do that. I think the, you know, there will be some reductions that are coming. It's a matter of when and how abruptly we do them. And so, and I think that, you know, that's the other thing in looking at a three-year sort of forward projection is sort of see what, what, what kind of reductions we have, what kind of reductions in enrollment we have over those next period of years as well. And it gets difficult to sustain the variety of programming we have if we have a continuing decline in enrollment. So that's, it's, there's going to be some trade-offs here we're going to have to make because, you know, we're currently at under 400 students in the middle school, under 900 students in our high school. It's difficult to sustain the wide variety of things with that few students. And so do we start to look at more school choice? Do we look at other kinds of options as we move forward? And I think that, you know, we've, as much as these are difficult conversations to have relative to these budgets, I think there are other districts that are in tougher shape than we are. I mean, not that that matters when we vote our budgets, but I think that we've tried to leverage the funds in a sort of sustained and tapering type of way. And yet it's still a pretty significant sort of step down between each of these last few years to mitigate that. And not everything that we've had to put in place over the last few years is able to be removed just yet. I think we see some higher needs in some aspects of our students that require continued and additional support. So it's difficult to make those reductions in and around sort of mental health supports and the impact that has on some of our special education needs and that sort of thing. So we'll continue to have these difficult conversations, I think, over the next couple of years because I think that there's no, I'm not aware of any sort of major shift in funding sources that anyone's, I think there are ideas about what can happen, what will or will not come to fruition over the next couple of years. It's going to be difficult to say with any certainty because I think there's a, I think there are a large number of districts that are like our districts that are in this minimum aid circumstance. And when it's such a big chunk, you know, the other way to look at it, Council Shane mentioned this, but I looked at the funding level at, you know, it was 2014 versus now for Chapter 70 as a percentage of the budget. It was like 31% of the budget. Well, if it was still 31% of the budget, we wouldn't have this conversation about $1 million. You know, we just wouldn't. Not that it was going to sustain or has ever sustained it at an inflationary rate, but nonetheless, even if it was approximating that. So this is sort of the reality of the Student Opportunity Act and we all voted for it. I think the resources that it's applying to districts like Hollyoke and Springfield and Lowell and places like that are well-placed resources, but it puts a burden on communities like ours to carry that for the rest of the Commonwealth. So that's a piece of this, too.
Andy Steinberg.
The first one, I want to acknowledge to the people who are still in the audience that were here before and spoke, that I appreciated all of your comments because it really does put the context on a very difficult decision that ultimately has to be made. But there are a number of troubling aspects that have been raised in the discussion that has taken place already. And part of it is that we're not alone. There are 218 minimum aid districts in the Commonwealth, including regional and town districts. So it's a fairly, it's a large number. There's more that are minimum aid districts than are not, as far as I'm aware. And so the other thing that's happening to all of the districts is that everybody had ESR funds, some used it differently than others. Everybody has their ESR funds being eliminated. And it's happening at the same time that the Student Opportunity Act is being implemented, which is where that minimum aid number comes from. So there's a lot of challenges that we face, but there's one long-term challenge that I think we also need to recognize, and that is that even before this all happened, the inflation annually in school budgets was greater than the revenue increases that was available to districts. Because districts ultimately rely strongly on property taxes, which have a 2.5% cap and what the legislature can provide. And in the best of years, we were seeing 2% to 3% increases. So that when the school budgets were continually going up, and if you look back at what was happening each year, there were small cuts being made each year. And, you know, what I think is really tragic this year, in addition to the cumulative small cuts that have happened over a great number of years, is that, you know, now we're facing a cliff as opposed to, you know, just a hill. This is really, was making us look at a cliff. So I recognize all of those things and I have been working, as you know, with Massachusetts Municipal Association to look into the fiscal policy issues, but they're not easy solutions. Best we can do is to continue to work together to present to the legislature. Now, the other thing that I want to turn to is the local side of it, just to put it into context and why it's going to be a very difficult decision that this council is making as the other three towns are making these decisions at town meetings where we in Amherst have, our community will speak to us and we will make the best decision that we possibly can. But the amount of additional reduction that we're being asked to look at because of the change in the budget from what was discussed at the four town meetings, grammatized is about $740,000. And to give that $740,000 a little bit of context, if we're going to do that by shifting from other expenditures that we envisioned for the budget, and I'm not picking on this one program I'm going to mention because no decision has been made, but it's greater than the entire budget of the Crest Department by about $100,000. So I just want to give you a context, what it means to ask us about with $740,000. Somebody during public comment mentioned the possibility of taking it from reserves. Most of our reserves, we've been setting aside for capital projects that still remain to be built. Fire station, which is long overdue to be constructed to be built to serve South Amherst and to replace a very antiquated station that is unhealthy for the community, unhealthy for the staff. We're working there in the Department of Public Works building, which is one of the most horrible buildings that we have staff working in the entire town. So there are consequences. And then there's one other, which is everybody points out on a regular basis how deplorable our roads are. And that's the other piece that has to be put into play. And there's no question that it's going to affect the amount of money that's available for all capital in roads. So I just encourage through the process that we hear from the community.
Point of order, Councilor Steinberg, would you please use your microphone? You're not able to be heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I lost it there. My finger. My finger fell off of it. The, I'm just concluding now, but what I was, what I was saying is, is that we really need to have our community to understand the depth of the problem and the depth of, and the cost of solving the problem if we're going to come up with the money. And we're going to have to make that decision. I assume that the other towns in the region are having similar discussions going forward. It's going to be a tough one. Thank you.
Jennifer Top.
Yeah, pardon me, I'm just thinking out loud, but it's such a catch-22. I mean, we know for Amherst to remain a viable community, we need to sustain and expand our year-round population, especially of families with children to send to our schools. And we need to maintain a robust student body or keep a student body at a certain level in order to have a robust curriculum and have enrichment classes. And if our schools aren't top-notch with that kind of robust curriculum, then we can't, we're challenged to entice families to move here and pay our high taxes. So, I mean, it, it seems, I know this isn't going to help us for fiscal year 25, but long and short term, that our colleges and university really need to step up and provide more support because our current economic model of only residential property taxes, you know, supporting the town is just not cutting it. I also just wanted to ask, in terms of anticipating, we knew that the, you know, ESER funds would be, that they had a lifespan, but are you finding that the academic setback and other kind of fallout from the pandemic and students not being in person in school for almost two years, that the fallout from that is exceeding the lifespan of the ESER funds? So it's hard to cut back when you need to still make up for that.
Please speak into the mic.
Yes.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, I don't know if you can answer this right now. Maybe this is something that'll come to FinCom, but I would be, two questions. I'd be curious to know how much of ESER money was spent for one-time expenses as opposed to recurring costs? I'd really like to know.
I think that's going to be an answer down the road.
Right. And I mention that because there's a town right next to us that's going through the same process we are, and they're not having a fiscal cliff. And that's because they spent all the ESER money on one-time costs. I was thinking of that leaking roof that was mentioned earlier, maybe anyway. So I'm just curious, how much of the ESER money was spent on recurring costs? How much was spent on one-time costs? The other has to do with the impact of the, the new contracts. I'd just be curious how much of the gap is reflected in the new contracts that have been, that signed. I assume that had a substantial impact. I just don't know, so I'm curious.
I can answer that second one a little bit. So there's a couple of pieces to this puzzle. One thing I would broadly suggest, and as we, as we head to the four towns meeting, we'll get into this a little bit more, but as an organization, we've gotten younger. So most of our contracts, certainly all of our union contracts have, are structured with various lanes. So depending on, in the teacher contract, it's education level, but in others, it depends on, on the type of work you do. And we have steps. And so, you know, when you come to workforce, you get placed on a, on a given lane and step, and then over time, you, you know, you get a step plus a cola. But then at some point, you get to the top of the scale and you just get a cola. So when I first started working for the district many years ago, we were about 70% of the staff were at the top step or close to 70% of the staff. That's a much lower percentage now, which puts a lot more inflationary pressure from one year to the next. So the raw dollars are less, but you have a step and a cola for a number, a larger number of staff. So that's one piece that plays into just generally speaking, regardless of what the cola is or anything else, we've just gotten younger as an organization and most organizations have, particularly with the pandemic. I think everybody shifted a little bit younger in, and I say younger, not necessarily, you know, age, but younger in their career with us relative to the, to the grades and steps. So that's one piece. So the, the second thing is, you know, sort of what you negotiate for a cost of letting increase. So, you know, a percentage point makes a big difference, but maybe not as much as you might think it would. So if, if we were to say, broadly speaking, if most of the, most of our union agreements had a 3% cola for the current, for fiscal 25, not all of them, some of them are in negotiations now, but broadly speaking, if we take those that had that sort of 3%, if it was zero, at the regional schools, that's about a half a million dollars. A percentage point is in the 150, 160 range, generally speaking, is a broad metric of, of that. And yet, you know, the counter to that is those were fully, you know, fairly negotiated contracts, and so we had to come to agreement. And, and, you know, inflationary pressures are, are real. So when we have, you know, when, when, when we talk about health insurance going up 9.74% this year, yeah, the district has their cost go up 9.74, but all the employees that pay their, their piece of that also has that go up 9.74. So, you know, they're, they're getting hit with some of those same costs we are, and that's not to diminish the impact, but, but it is, you know, it is a factor. I think that the fact that we've gotten younger is, is putting a little more inflationary pressure on our, our budgets year over year. And that's the nature of having contracts that have, you know, sort of steps and, and colas as a part of how, how they're structured. But I think a lot of districts are in the same boat as we are because, you know, baby boomers are retiring or have retired, that's sort of tapering to the end. And so, you know, new staff are coming in and are not at the, the very top of the, of the, of the salary scale. The other thing you have, and it's not as much a factor in, say, our, our teaching category, but some of our other contracts, you know, with the minimum wage going to $15, you get some compression between the bottom and top of, of the, of the salary scale. But it does tend to put, you know, pressure on the entirety of the scale to, to move everyone's salary up as well. So those are all, you know, pieces of the puzzle. No real, you know, sort of straight line connections between some of them, but at the same time, they're, they're there and they are, you know, they are factors in, in influencing our, our labor costs. And since we are so labor-intensive as far as our costs are concerned, anytime those things impact labor, it's a much more profound impact on our overall budgets. And back to the question on how much for one-time things versus ongoing things, we had a mix. You know, we did some one-time funding. There were sometimes, there were some positions we funded for, for a short period and we tapered those out of our budget. There's some things we've been, we've been supporting and we thought we would be tapering more of them out and we haven't been able to yet. So it's, it's kind of a mix would be the, the sort of broad answer at this point. I can look more closely at the, at the specifics of that. There are some things that we definitely bought that were one, one-time sort of things. Leveraging the ESER funds for capital expenses was a bit involved. You couldn't, had to do a fair amount of, of effort to allow it to be used for capital expense. So it had to be kind of a careful structuring there. So we didn't do as much of that, as much as we have capital needs as, as, you know, you've probably seen in, in some of our documentation and given the ages of our buildings. But, but it was, it was a non-straightforward process to do very much in, in the, in the realm of capital with ESER funds.
I'm concerned about how I heard you talk about revolving funds. So you built them up in, over this period, say, from COVID, and now you're using them as a way to help make it not be as bad. But even that has a limited life, correct?
Correct. So the idea is to make the, the shrinking happen over a longer period of time as opposed to severe sort of steps.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure I understood that one because it's kind of like ESER. I mean, it's not going to be there forever.
Right.
And you built up some reserves in those and now you're using those to make it slightly less painful.
Right.
Okay. The other, there's a couple of other realities out there. Some of the Eastern Mass towns actually are gaining some population, but we're not. And as much as I hope and would love Amherst to be able to attract more young families to it, the reality is the birth rate isn't there. We know already who is in kindergarten today and where they will be in 12th grade. And so we need to be planning in a way that understands what the school population actually looks like. In addition to that, people are migrating out of the Northeast, not to the Northeast. And if we think this looks bad, wait for about three years when it hits higher ed and they start seeing the real problems, even in our own town. So that's a reality. I, I just have hope. I have serious hope that we can find creative solutions to continue to offer the best possible variety of courses to a shrinking high school population. So that in fact, we can continue to be very proud of not just where our kids go to college, but for those kids that don't go to college, the kinds of future they can look at. And I really urge that no matter how this budget comes out this year, that that planning process needs to get serious and it needs to have some real expertise brought into it. And it has to involve conversations across the Commonwealth because the solutions are going to have to be across the Commonwealth. We're not alone. You've said it many times. So somehow or another, as we, as, you know, Amherst, put our faith and our hope in our schools, we've got to ask that you not put off this really serious, serious planning for the future any longer. I know we're looking for a new superintendent, et cetera. Let's hope they're ready to take it on. Because we can't be sitting here every year asking for an 8% increase in our budget for the schools. And there is no way that I see the state making it up. Somebody said at one point, Chair, Chair Sarah Marshall and I discussed, oh, let's do a campaign for chapter 70. And then I realized we'd be going to the state to try to get about $80,000 more. And I said, how much time can I spend on trying to get $80,000 more from the state? You know, it isn't, chapter 70 is killing us. It's killing Anchar and it's really hurting a wide variety of school districts. But Amherst has to figure out our future and it has to be a future where we stay invested in our kids and we figure out using things like technology to make sure we can continue to offer the variety of classes that we are able to offer now. I don't have a question. I'm sure I'll have more, but you answered the one about revolving funds. Pat DeAngelis?
Thank you. You know how when you have a pebble in your shoe, it can be really small, but it keeps bothering you? I have a very minor question in this very large structured budget. The reduction of capital projects, okay? And we're being told, me for the first time, about leaking ceilings or pipes that have flooded auditoriums and rooms. So is that being addressed this year as a capital project? What's happening with that specific pebble?
So we've, you know, we knew we were needing a roof at the middle school for a while. We have been applying every year for several years to, to get support from the state through their MSBA projects. It's called accelerated repair program, which is different than the one that the town of Amherst is getting for the school building. And, you know, we're, we're in a group called Everyone because, you know, districts across the Commonwealth built schools like we did in the, in the late 60s and early 70s. And so all of them have school roofs that need to be replaced at the same time. So the, the, the program and the funding source for MSBA funding is, is kind of highest need first. And so, you know, each year that they sort of award projects like roof replacement, we tend to be sort of one year up of the cycle of cutoff for that. So we've been planning and working on that and we have actually a debt authorization to, to, which we'll, we'll probably have to get a larger one in, in a couple of years because a number, number of years have passed and the costs have gone up. So we've been, we've been continuing to work in, in, in submitting to that program and have not yet been successful. And last fall, we did, we did take some of that debt authorization to do some, some repair work on that roof. And yet it's, you know, it's not a complete repair by any stretch. You know, it, it is a bit of a whack-a-mole problem with a roof that's, you know, at that over 25-year-old sort of place. I will say that the, the, you know, the sort of weather event, I mean, we do have and have had for several years issues with regard to, to the roof and, and, and we have a variety of ways we've tried to capture that water in, in ways that are least harmful to students and, and least disruptive to the educational program. However, we had a circumstance, the early part of the winter where, you know, we've got three points of snow and then it rained for two days. And so that's basically put a sponge on top of the roof and then fill it with water. It doesn't matter, you know, if we'd had a new roof, we might've still had leaking problems in that circumstance. And that's not to diminish the need is very great there. We've been trying to find a mechanism to get our roof funded from MSBA. They cover roughly about half the cost. And, and we've also been waiting and they put the program on pause during the pandemic for a year, and so that's delayed another year. So we did submit again this year. You know, and we're hopeful for that. You know, if it degrades much further, we're going to have to, to, to just cover the cost on our own and, and figure out what that is, but it's going to cost all four towns twice as much. And so when you look at our, that, you know, that sort of last slide and you look at those out years where the numbers start to get really big really quick, there's a number of projects like that that are in the mix there. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a real conundrum. There, there are, you know, a variety of things, talking about sort of strategizing to the future and thinking about, well, how many students do we have and how do we structure ourselves? And do we, you know, still maintain two buildings? You know, the middle school building was built in 1969. The high school building has a portion building from 55, part of the building from 64 and part of the building from 96. So the newest part of the building's, you know, pushing 30 years. Roughly about half the building is from 96 renovation and then about 20% from the 50s and, and 30% from the, from the 60s. And so all of that building needs some work as well. And so do we look at different ways to structure both the buildings and where we put the kids, you know, as part of the longer-term planning and thinking about how to be most efficient with the number of kids we're going to have and the space we have and the infrastructure we have? So all of those things are, are simultaneously components we have to evaluate and, and think about in the coming years because any project of any significance, you know, of a capital nature, you know, requires some real, you know, forethought and planning and, and, and gathering of resources to cover it. Because, you know, so an idea that we looked at a, a few years ago and, and then sort of, you know, was looking at whether or not, oh, well, if we get a little bit smaller, maybe we do a small addition at the high school building and put seven to 12 all in that sort of space. But that kind of stalled pretty quickly because once you make that level of addition to the building, you have to bring the remainder of the building up to code. And so the lowest in cost on that was over $30 million and that was, you know, five years ago. So all of those are in the mix as we think about these kinds of things and, and, and we're endeavoring to, to, to maintain those buildings as best we can and, and strike that balance between, you know, leveraging state funding to help us out and just needing to do some of the work wholly on our own. And we're trying to find that right balance in, in doing that. But it makes for challenging spaces for kids to be in and that's unfortunate.
Thank you for all sharing.
Fun to do. Or the budget. I have it on.
So ARPA funds, I believe, could be used for that kind of repair?
Thank you.
Counselor Hanke?
This question may be more for our town manager, but potentially also our acting superintendent. Negotiations with Amherst College for potential pilots have been ongoing for a number of years, and we have not received a lot of updates about those. But my question is specifically regarding funding for schools from Amherst College. Has Amherst College during those negotiations offered any specific amounts of funding specifically for either elementary or regional schools or any capital projects related to them? And if so, what is the, what was the town's response to the specific funding that may or may not have been offered?
So currently, as my understanding, that Amherst College provides about $85,000 a year, $75,000 goes to the region, and about $10,000 goes to the elementary school. They have discussed a slightly larger number over a long period of time, which I've determined is well, well, well below what needs to happen from the college.
Pat, did you have your hand up? Okay, seeing no more hands, I'm going to make a motion in accordance with, and seek a second, in accordance with Charter Section 5.5A to refer the Amherst Pelham Regional School Budget to the Finance Committee for a public hearing and recommendation to the council within 30 days. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'm going to begin with Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz? Aye. Counselor Hanke? Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord? Did we lose her? Okay, I'll come back and see. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Jean?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
And Counselor Lord? She's there, but she may have taken a break. All right, it's unanimous except for one counselor who is absent. Thank you. We are going to take a 10-minute break, which is long overdue. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your time. Thank you for those of you that have hung out in the audience as long as you have.
Thank you all very much for taking.
Please make sure you mute and also turn your picture off. Turn it back on when you come back. We need to reassemble. Thank you. Yeah. As you return, please put your video back on so I know you're back. I just want to make sure people are back. I'm, okay, you're back. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Community Preservation Act appropriation for FY25. Before we begin, I'm calling on Jennifer Taub, and then I have a statement to make as well. Please go ahead, Jennifer.
Yes, I just want to make the statement that one of the applications for the CPA is from, to the CPA committee, is from the Local Historic District Commission, and my husband is a member of that commission, but neither of us have any material interest in the application. So I don't feel I need to accuse myself, but I just wanted to share that bit of information.
Thank you. In a very similar vein, my husband is on the group that has applied for the Mill River Historic Work, and his name is on the application as one of the members. Again, neither he nor I have anything to gain from that, and so I see no reason why I can't continue to vote. Pat?
I guess I need to say something about Carol.
I guess you do. It's what happens in small towns. We're all related.
My wife is one of the co-chairs of the Amherst Community Housing Trust, but that is not affecting whether I vote to support it or not.
Thank you. Are there any other confessions? Any other, any other related complicated relationships? Please don't talk about them. Thank you. Okay. This is, we're going to start, I'm going to, I'm going to place a motion on the floor, okay? And that is in accordance with Charter Section Paragraph 5.6, I guess it's Section 5.6. Having been published on the town bulletin board for a minimum 10 days on February 23, 2024, a public forum held on March 18, 2024, and having been reviewed by the Finance Committee with a report on April 1, 2024, to adopt Council Order FY25-07A and order appropriating the FY2025 Community Preservation Act Budget as shown on Page 7 of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Rooney.
Thank you. Comments? Kathy?
Yes, could you just show the motion that we're looking at? Because there was, there's one line that's been amended in the original financial order, and I want to make sure we're, yes, that's what I wanted to see. Thank you. I just want to make sure that's what we're voting on.
It is. Okay. Are there any comments or questions?
Yes, point of order, actually. If we, if we, the motion deleted the $20,000 for the East Historic District, how would one reinsert that?
You would have to make a motion to amend the motion. This is the motion at, let me begin first of all by saying I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to comment, and then we'll go to the rest of the council. So Bob?
Yeah, we considered all of these projects, and we actually, the Finance Committee was perfectly fine with this particular project, the $20,000 project. It was just, there was some wording in the application itself that we've had problems with. So what we were proposing was that just to send it back to CPAC to get them to change the application. I don't know what the process is for them to do that, but only to then have it come back to us, and then we would be prepared to approve it. So it's, we don't have any problem with the project itself. It's just some of the wording, and it's in our report to the council, some of the wording was such that we didn't want to have that be establishing our positions on certain things. The council has its own positions on development and other issues. The other thing is that in the original, in this order, it's, the name of the project is the East Amherst Local Historic District, and it's not a study committee, which that, that word, it should be, it should read Local Historic District Study Committee. You know, we don't want to have this, you know, by de facto establish a district by voting to approve this. So it's, again, there's no issue with the project itself. It's just the language in the application and then how it was entitled on this order that we objected to.
I just want to acknowledge that Sam McLeod is in the, is on Zoom with us. He is the chair of the CPA Committee. And Sam, you raise your hand, so I'm going to call on you and then go to the other counselors.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you all for all you do. Again, I did watch the portion of the Finance Committee meeting. I am familiar with the applications. I thought it would be relevant for me to make a couple of comments regarding the project in question, which is the East Amherst Historic District. One point I wanted to make was that the report that our committee sent to Finance and the Town Council, the names of the projects reflected the exact names that appeared in the applications that we received. That is to say that the specific name for this project application as submitted was East Amherst Local Historic District. Blank. It was submitted by the East Amherst Local Historic District Study Committee. So the Study Committee was the organization that submitted the request. The title of the request was East Amherst Local Historic District. Whether or not that would have been a desirable title to use for their project is a different question. If I were to have gone back to the time period where we created the descriptions in conjunction with town staff that we sent to our committee, I probably would have placed adjacent to the title of their project in parentheses, the word "study," so that their title as submitted, I might have made an asterisk amendment, titleing it East Amherst Local Historic District Study. So that was one point I was going to make. The other point I wanted to make was regarding the concept of the CPA making alterations to the applications. We have a particular form that's utilized at present as a standard process that was open from September 1 through September 30 of 2023. That application is closed. So we, as a committee, don't have the capacity to alter the phraseology words or perhaps bad words, you know, editorializing words that might have been submitted as part of an application. So, you know, I don't know what our committee might do if something comes back to us. I would offer the, since you've asked me to, or been kind enough to let me speak, Lynn, I would suggest the following, that the applicant could conceivably submit some comment seeking to retract it. I'm not sure, logistically, if our committee can address the existing application and change it, or they could resubmit again in the following cycle, which is in 20, commences in September, most likely of 2025, this, 2024, this summer. So I wanted to clarify the name of the application. It reflects that title, even though it might be a misnomer. And secondly, I'm not sure what our committee can do in terms of altering, other than to have a discussion related to the application and possibly get a comment or a desired statement of attraction for the council. Those are my comments. So, thank you for the opportunity to say my thoughts after having to listen to what was discussed.
Thank you. Before I go any further, Pam Rooney, did we answer your question? Okay. Counselor Hanke?
Yeah, I may raise my hand to speak on this matter particularly, but on the order that's on the motion sheet, that has the red lined out and the numbers fixed under the appropriation order chart, the order itself and the paragraph above has a number that was not fixed. And so I don't know whether I need to make a motion to amend the
No.
line that says order to appropriate 1,855,136 to 1,835,136 at the very second paragraph of the entire order that follows right after order. If I need to make the motion, I will make the motion.
No, I don't think you need to. I think we'll just make the correction. Athena? Thank you. Anna?
So I was a bit surprised that Finance Committee came out saying that they didn't want to recommend a project, even though they agreed with the project because of the wording in an application. And I want to be clear, I didn't appreciate the wording in the application either. For example, there are some things that I just felt were inaccurate. If, if we had quote unquote "student hotels," we'd be getting more lodging tax money than we currently are, so that's just not true. But I'd like to, I'd like to hear what the committee specifically recommends in terms of the, the wording that they'd like to see, because it seems like my, my understanding of our role is to approve projects, not direct wording in applications. And, you know, it feels like a slippery slope to sending back applications for, I'm being a bit dramatic, but sending back applications for typos, right? If we start wordsmithing applications, where is the limit that there would need to be changes the council or council members find objectionable before it triggers that project not being taken under consideration? If people find the project objectionable or not in compliance with CPA law, it would make a lot more sense to me to strike it from the recommendations the council makes. But I, this feels like a very slippery slope, which leads me to two questions, which one is for Sam and one is for town staff, which is, the first is, Sam, did this, can you, can you tell us if this conversation occurred in any sort of way when this project was, was being discussed at CPA? And then second is, what would be town staff involvement with this project? And I apologize, I have read the application, but I don't have it up in front of me, because I, again, I think that personal opinion does come in on any CPA proposal. People care about a project, that's their opinion, that that project should be prioritized. I personally do find the language in this not something I necessarily agree with, but I agree with the, what the money is funding. And for me, that is what we are voting as a council. So I'd love to hear if CPA did discuss this specific issue as well, and what town staff involvement would be with this project.
Paul, is this something David Zomek might speak to? Yes, David's also with us on Zoom. David, would you unmute and perhaps speak to that?
Sure, thanks, Lynn. Are you, are you talking specifically to what role Counselor Dublin Gauthier's question about what role staff would play?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so with most CPA proposals, there would be staff support, as, as, as the council knows. So whether it's something related to recreation or planning or, you know, whatever category of affordable housing, there's always staff support. So staff would work closely on this study of the East Village, you know, the historic structures. They would, you know, if there was a consultant to be hired to do the work, they would work with our procurement officer, or excuse me, procurement office to, to hire that consultant, et cetera, et cetera. So there would be close, you know, close, you know, supervision and involvement by Planning Department staff. Nate Malloy is one of the folks that we often lean on for these kinds of projects, and he would be directly involved with this one.
Is there any other question, Anna?
No, I think that clarifies, I think, what I, the reason why I wanted to know was, even if the initial application had a bias one way or another, or some of the applicants or one of the applicants did have an interest in doing this to a certain end, the fact that it's town staff that are deeply engaged in it, who do not have a stance on the issues, who are, who are seeking to do the historic preservation work without a stance on, on future development, for me, that, again, leads me to trust that application in this project is deserving of CPA funding.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Yes, so I didn't, was just maybe a half hour before the meeting that I read the Finance Committee report and saw that the word "incursion" had kind of raised a red flag. And so I just wanted to clarify, because before I was on the council, I chaired the Local Historic District Commission, and incursion is a historic preservation term, and it's actually a term from the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It's in their handbook on local historic districts. And a study, you have to, when you apply, when you're just doing the study as the first step to even thinking about whether an area would be appropriate for local historic district designation, the first thing you have to do is survey all the historic structures and document the history for them, and then now they're digitized. And I believe that the CPA Committee thought it was important because the East Amherst, the area around the East Amherst Common is the oldest part of Amherst, that it was, be worth the, you know, the small amount, relatively small amount of funds to just have a digitized record of the history of all these 40 or more, I think is what it is, historic buildings and structures that are around and adjacent to the East Commons, to the East Commons. So that is really what this study, it's, it would, has value in and of itself. It's just the first step in applying to be her local historic district designation. It would have to go through many steps, have to survey the property owners in the area to see if they would be interested in having the designation. It comes back to the council, and then it ultimately goes to the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and they're the ones who ultimately accept the application. And they, in their instructions of how you sort of categorize buildings and structures in the area, some are called incursions, it's almost like non-conforming structures, but it's not a pejorative term or a subjective term, and that's where that word comes from. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Jo?
So I will address, as a member of Finance Committee, and honest questions, because I was the one that initially brought this forward and struggled with whether I could support the project based on the application, because to me, supporting a project is also supporting the application. And the application, I had extreme problems with, even though after speaking with the Chair of CPA Committee, I understood the potential benefits of the act getting the historic structures reports. But I had concerns about, does supporting that mean we support a local historic district, the creation of a local historic district? It was not clear, and given the wording on all of this, it, it implies, if we're passing this, that there might even be a historic district. But my bigger concern was by supporting a project where the application says, quote, "The construction of prefab shoddy-built student hotels which detract from and devalue the town and benefit only a handful of landlords," is something I cannot support. And so I was not sure what to do about a project where an app, where I cannot support the wording in the application. And after speaking at Finance, Finance came through with this sort of solution of essentially asking the applicants to reapply with wording that is not so divisive, that is not necessarily accurate, and that frankly devalues more than half of our student, our population in town by the wording that it has. And so, you know, the application also indicated that they were actually applying for this, or at least the historic district, because they're concerned about development and want to stop it. And that's another concern I have. You know, they quoted, quote, "rapid changes are occurring in the area, including a new school and a proposed adjacent overlay district that are impacting its historic character and integrity." And, and as the finance report indicated, talked about the protections that a historic district potentially give to slowing or stopping redevelopment or development in an area. So I couldn't, I, I, I had concerns that voting the project equates to supporting the application, and the wording in the application is not something I can support.
Jennifer, I'm going to go over to Andy, since he's not spoken. Andy?
Yes, I would make a suggestion that what we probably should do is initiate an inquiry with the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, as to whether they would consider it appropriate for the applicant and the CPA Committee to agree on a modification of the language in the elimination of a sentence that is not central to the application itself or the merit of the application. And if we can get that kind of clearance, then I think that it would, it might make everybody comfortable to just change the application by eliminating the sentence and get it back before the end of the fiscal year, which is what we want to do so that we can adopt it and have it be a budget item that can be, where work can be done during FY25, which ends July 1. And if DOR, Division of Local Services, comes in with an, with an answer that, we hope that they won't, that says that you can't change an application, that they would object to are doing that even under the limited circumstances, then we still could have the council make a decision as to whether or not it wants to fund it on the application submitted.
I have a clarifying question, and I'm, then I'm going, I'm going to look to Paul and Dave Zomek, and that is, do we have to go to the state for that kind of a ruling?
No, I don't think we can, need to go to the state. I think we can make a judgment, and I think the controlling document will be the contract that we enter into to expend the funds. So I think we can put in the contract whatever the council, we usually don't get into the detail of the application, we set a contract with a consultant, say, to spend $20,000 to do the work to explore this, this historic area.
Okay. Thank you. It didn't seem to me that this would require going back to the state, but I am going to trust your judgment on that. Pat, go ahead. She, she's spoken once, so I was going to give you a chance.
Given, I understand you can correct the language, and then that makes it all okay. And I can't sup, if this were here, right now, not removed by the CPAC Committee, I cannot support it. I mean, Mandy, you, you stated some of the reasons. It's clear we designed this district, which is in my district and near where I live. It, it really is to stop development that we need. And the language is the true language of the people who are forming this committee. So you can change the sentence and make it sound better, but the goal of this particular group is the same. So I would not be able to support this now or in the future.
Jennifer?
Yeah, so I wanted, first of all, in terms of development, so I live in a local historic district. We have had, the library is in the district. We're doing a major renovation expansion. We built one of a, the Sunset Fearing Townhouse Development is in the Local Historic District Commission. Before, they did have to go before the commission to get a certificate of appropriateness, which they got. They, the project does look like it's contextually belongs in the general, in the neighborhood, but there has been a lot of new development and building in a local, in the local historic, the North Prospect Sunset Lincoln Local Historic District. The Emily Dickinson, the Amherst Media Building, that is in the Dickinson Local Historic District. Destination Amherst is, I mean, people come to Amherst to visit our, you know, if they're, if they're, they have, you know, children that are visiting our colleges and universities, and then parents come to visit them here. And the other reason people come to Amherst is our history, and there are a lot of buildings in this area. It may never become a local historic district, but there are a number of buildings from the 1700s. It's the oldest part of town, which we would do well to ensure are not taken down, that there, and it doesn't mean that you cannot have development. I mean, in the district, the East Street School would be built there. So they're trying to help Amherst retain its historic character, which I think is what Destination Amherst, in large part, is all about, is in no way precluded by having a local historic district. There is development and new building in local historic districts all the time, but you, it would be harder to take down, you know, the 1700, I'm forgetting the name of the tavern where the bacon, yeah, or the JCA building, but it in no, in no way precludes new development or, or expansion of currently existing structures.
Anna? Anna?
So the goal of the group can be what it is, but my question for, I guess I'm going to just put it out to the group and I, I think it might be Jennifer is the most experienced in this. Aren't the qualifications for determining whether something is historic or not and should be in this registry based on state or national standards? It's not something that this group gets to pick. Thank you. Jennifer is nodding for the record. So it's not something that this group is going to be determining qualifications, that something will, will then count as historic and can never be touched. And, and I am supporting putting this back on the list for exactly the reason that was stated, which is that the governing document is not the application, but the contract that is entered into, that the town is a part of and town staff are, are a part of. Historic protections don't prevent demolition of historic structures. My house is a really prime example of this. I live in a really old house. No historian is going to fight me if I said I wanted to knock it down because it's just not, it's cute little spot, but it is not going to be, you know, in the history books here. So I think that I, I'd like to hear, I, I would like to hear from, I think Dave maybe, about the benefits or drawbacks to this from a town perspective without agenda for development or non-development. But I, if, if you're able to do that, David, I'd like to hear it, or Paul. I'd love to hear that. But I just, again, this group isn't going to get to decide whether something's historic or not. That's, that's not what this group gets to do, no matter who's in the group.
I'm going to call on the town manager.
Thank you. So many of you may know that I previously had worked at the Cambridge Historical Commission, which is a local historic preservation commission. I walked through this area a lot and I'm, I think that this area needs to be examined. It's the historic center of the town of Amherst. There are a lot of buildings built in the 1700s and early 1800s in that area that are constructively being demolished because they're not being maintained. This, this, so I think that the town should be proactive in looking at this area and that's what this is a very, very, very first step, is to examine the buildings that are in that dis, in that area. Ultimately, it could become a historic, a local historic district. That's again, a vote of the council to even begin that process in terms of establishing a, if we're going to do a local historic district, a local historic district study committee. And there are rules about who has to serve on such a committee. So I think that I totally understand the, the concern about the language. Historic preservation, it should not be used as a tool to prevent development. But there are, every historic district commission, every historical district has what they call intrusions. In national registered districts, they're called contributing or non-contributing buildings. So, and those are generally just exempt from regulation in that situation. So, but the goal of this is to look at the assemblage of buildings that are in that geographical area and provide a modicum of preservation for them. But this isn't even there yet. We're just saying like, what's there? That's what this money will do, is like inventory the buildings, do a survey of architectural history on this area and see what's there and see if it's, if there's enough evidence, historical evidence there to support the next step, which would be to establish a study committee.
David, you had your hand up? I gather you don't feel you have anything you need to add at this time?
The only thing I would add, Lynn and Paul said it very well just moments ago, you know, that staff is squarely behind the proposal for the assessment, for the study of the buildings. It's unfortunate that some of the, the, the language in the proposal has, has, you know, you know, ended us here, here tonight and brought us to this, this point. But essentially, this is really just, this is a study of the building, of the architecture, of the history of these buildings, the land, you know, how we ended up with the land use and the, the buildings in the configuration they're in, in this village center. And that's, will lead to other work in, in this long process. So staff is squarely behind the study itself. And as Paul said, the contract will determine the scope of the work for the consultant.
George?
So just to clarify, if that's possible, if this motion goes ahead, this particular item is going back to CPA? And then they're going to go back to the sponsors to see if they'll change the language? And then it will then come back to us for a vote? Is that at the moment where we stand?
That would be the, that at the moment, that is where we would have to stand because the way the motion is, it excludes this project.
If we were to put this back in, since what we're hearing from staff and from a number of other speakers, is that there is general support for this in spite of its intempered language, then it would just go ahead. Could we make a motion to, I would like to make a motion to reinsert this item back into the original motion and have it go ahead as it originally was presented to us? Could I do that?
Yes, you can. Athena, is there any particular way you want that motion worded?
Not the way I said it, I know.
It would be a motion to amend, to change the appropriation amount to 1,855,136 to reinsert the East Amherst Local Historic District under Historic Preservation, the amount of $20,000 with a funding source of CPA UDFB. And to change the less projects recommended above to 1,855,136 dollars. And the remaining UDFB for debt service to be voted in the general fund, 520,250 dollars.
George?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second by Rooney, who would replace, would be glad to replace her original second.
Thank you.
May I speak to the motion?
Please.
I understand that some people are offended by the language. I too am offended by the language, but I think it's really not the point here. This is a good thing, it should be done. Staff sees it should be done. And what really, as Anna pointed out, what matters is the contractual language. So I think we should just go ahead and I hope you'll support the amended motion.
Are there any other comments at this time? Is there anybody that, Kathy?
I'll just make a quick comment because I was on the Finance Committee. I support what George has just said, and particularly the fact that staff will be writing a contract. I think it doesn't matter what the original proposal wording was, that there is a body of work to be done and there's a need for it to be done. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Yes.
Pat?
I'm going to quote Humpty Dumpty. Humpty Dumpty said, "When I use a word, it means exactly what I choose it to mean, nothing more and nothing less." And those words carry meaning and intention that I think is inappropriate.
Are there any other comments? There's an amendment on the floor. The amendment's been made and seconded. The amendment would restore this project to the financial order. I'm not going to go through the detailed wording of the amendment. I'm going to leave that to the clerk of the council. Are there any other comments? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment and after that, come back to the original motion. Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
No.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord? I'm going to say absent. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker? Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Anna Devlin-Goth here?
Aye.
It passes unanimously?
No.
I'm sorry. It passes?
Ten in favor, two opposed and one absent.
Thank you. Ten in favor, two opposed and one absent. I didn't, I'm sorry about the unanimous. Now we are back to the original motion. And?
I have my hand up?
Yes.
I would ask that we split out that particular project from the original motion?
That we pull it out from the original motion?
So that it's two votes?
Okay. So that the original motion is going to be to pass the financial order the way it is present and then we're going to vote separately on the financial or on a motion to, yes.
Point of order.
You want to split the motion?
What, sorry? It's a motion to divide, is that possible?
It's a motion to divide, yes.
So Mandy is making a motion that we will then vote on?
Yes, she's making a motion to divide.
Thank you.
Is?
I, I don't think we need a second and a vote to divide.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I was, exactly what I wanted to ask.
But we need to know which part, the council will vote first.
Mandy Jo, did you have your hand up? You made, you, you wanted to divide.
So yeah, I'm asking to divide out the East Amherst Local Historic District line from?
Understood.
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want the council to vote on that one line first or the rest of the funding first?
Yes. Go ahead and vote on that line first. Do you have a motion for that one?
Point of order, I, I rarely say point of order, but don't we have an amended financial order on the table? Don't we?
We do have an amended.
Now we're going to have to vote on whether we, whether or not we want to divide?
Right. We have a, we have a financial order, amended financial order on the table. The request has been made to divide that financial order into two votes.
And are we going to vote on that motion?
No, we do not have to vote on, according to Athena, we don't have to have a second order to vote on the motion to divide.
Not on a motion to divide. So?
It's basically a request to divide.
So the council can vote the appropriation, the order without the East Amherst Historic District? And then it would be another vote on the East Amherst Historic District? I'd need a minute to change the order to have two separate orders, if you want to do it that way, or you could just vote and I'll create two separate orders afterwards.
Let's do it that way, please. Okay? So?
Do you want?
Let's do the first one on the East Amherst Historic, Local Historic District.
Point of order, I don't know what we're voting on.
Okay. We voted, first of all, we did vote the amendment. The amendment put that back into the financial order. Then Counselor Hanke has requested that we divide the vote on the financial order into two votes. One is a vote for the East Amherst Local Historic District by itself and the other is for everything else.
Okay, but the original
It's?
Order was amended, that, that, there's a motion to
Right.
For the amended version of the order, correct?
To be divided.
The current order that's in front of the council, that's on the floor, the motion that's on the floor, is a motion to adopt the order appropriating the Community Preservation Act budget with the East Amherst Local Historic District line, because that was, the amendment was to add it back to the order. That's what's in front of you now. Counselor Hanke has requested that those things be separated and the council vote on everything but the East Amherst Historic District and then the East Amherst Historic District line as a separate motion.
Thank you.
So there's a motion on the floor that we're going to take as two separate motions.
Okay. And so, are there other questions? George, you have your hand up? I don't think so. Okay. So let's vote on the East Amherst Local Historic District line first.
Can we take 30 seconds and just make sure we're all on the same page?
Yes.
And I just want to register, when I checked, a motion to divide should be voted on, when I just looked at the general rules out there, but I'm willing to do this for the purpose of time. But, okay.
I, I, frankly Kathy, I thought a motion to divide had to be seconded and voted on.
And, and just so everyone knows, in our packet, we have the original financial order.
Right.
Not just the one with the strikeout. So, okay, I'm willing to do it because I want to move on, but this is crazy.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, George?
Sorry. So I understand a motion to divide is a courtesy to another counselor. So I think that's why it's probably not debatable. So it's just a courtesy. If someone asks to divide the motion, as a courtesy, you allow them to do that. The motions are still before you to vote on, but as a courtesy, you do that.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on with, this time we are voting on only that line item of the financial order. Okay? Yes. The East Amherst Local Historic District Inprem Study Committee. Okay. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
No.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord? Absent. Pam Rooney?
Aye.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Anna Devlin-Goth here?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
The vote is ten in favor, two opposed, one absent. We go back and now we are voting on all the rest of the financial order. Okay? Any questions? Your hand is still up. All right. This time we're going to begin with Counselor Hanke. Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord? Absent. Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Goth here?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. And I think I made it through all. It is 12 people in favor and one person absent. We are going to move on to the bylaw 3.50 rental registration bylaw regulations and fee schedule. This is a first reading. We will possibly vote next week on the 8th. So that I'm now calling on CRC Chair Pam Rooney.
A point of order. I just want to note that there was a motion on the sheet that's a moot point now that the Finance Committee had recommended. We didn't speak to that, but I'm assuming that the council doesn't want to take up that motion.
I'm sorry, what?
The council had recommended that the community, that the council requests the Community Preservation Act Committee work with the East Amherst Local Historic District applicant. There's a motion on the sheet for that. I'm saying that it's moot and we're moving on. Just wanted to make a note of it.
Thank you.
Because you're not voting on it.
I just looked down and saw the motion. Thank you. All right. We're moving on to 3.50 rental reg, residential renter bylaw regulations and fee schedule. And I'm going to call on CRC Chair Pam Rooney. We also have, I don't even know if he's going to still join us. Bob Mora is available at some point, but David Zomack is also with us. Pam?
Thank you. And can you hear me without punching over my thing?
We can hear you.
Before I even start, and thank you for putting this up, can you share screens with, so I can actually see it? Thank, great, thank you. I do want to respect and thank the members of the CRC, starting in 2022, and the members of the community who have waited on this essentially since day one. And I, I see one in the audience. And I do want to thank Tom Crossman for being a devoted follower of this topic. So starting out, residential rental property bylaw 3.50. This is an update coming from the Community Resource Committee. It is our first reading. Next slide. Back in 2023, town meeting adopted a rental registration bylaw. There was previously no tracking of rental units. The permit was vol, required, but it was a voluntary self-certification for health and safety com- self-certification for health and safety compliance. Over, since 2023, we have seen increasing numbers of especially single-family homes converting to rentals. The number of permits, however, started to drop, indicating non-compliance. The program itself was primarily complaint-driven. So at the start of the 2022 council term, four counselors sponsored the update of this bylaw. Town Council referred the task to CRC on March 21, 2022. Thank you. Next slide. The goals that were identified by the, by the CRC as, and the counselors sponsoring, as we began to put it together, were, A, to protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents, implement a proactive inspection program instead of relying on self-certification of compliance, monitor and enhance compliance for basic life safety through the licensing, also provide clear and accessible guidelines for the operation of rental properties for tenants, owners, landlords, and neighbors, ensure awareness of and responsibility for other related town bylaws, and to identify rental units on an ongoing basis. Next slide. What will the update require? So it's a very complex bylaw. It's fairly extensive. But in essence, what will it require is that all rental units get a permit from the town or face a penalty. The exemptions are hotels, motels, and group homes. Contact information for all owners and local management is required. The management plans, such as trash, parking, maintenance of grounds, would be required rather than self-certifying that these would be met. Today, we do not have, we do not have many situations with management plans. Once in a five-year inspection for health, fire, building codes, and added town bylaws, rather than complaint-driven or emergencies only. Tenant information sheets, which do occur now, but with key local regulations, reminders of bylaws including noise, alcohol, and nuisance, and reflection of state laws and codes that apply to rental properties. Also, a comprehensive appeal process was created. Next slide. Lots of public outreach and engagement. I want to thank Shalini Bal Millen at this point for her survey that she put together that went through Engage Amherst. But the community forums occurred in July and October 2022. They engaged a good number of tenants, neighbors, and large and small management businesses. The Engage Amherst survey was also well utilized. It included people that signed up as tenants or identified as tenants, as managers, and as neighbors. We did receive a letter of concern from the Landlord Association, especially regarding the inspection requirement. As a result, we had another session, owner-manager work session in February 2024, and made some changes as a, as a result of that. We also got ongoing public comments in regular meetings. Next slide. The process was long. We started out reviewing other Massachusetts college communities where bylaws and inspection programs existed, namely, or including Salem, Boston, and Lowell. We engaged with the Building Commissioner and Senior Inspector on a, on a, on a constant basis, reviewing and understanding current and potential practices. We separated out nuisance bylaw concerns to update in a parallel track, so that is not linked specifically to the rental bylaw. It, it went through legal review, GOL review, and that input was addressed in text changes. There is consideration of fee structure that went to Finance Committee, and again, came back to CRC. And finally, the, the proposed implementation plan and final text reflected the input of that implementation plan. Next slide. The fee structure tried to keep the fees the lowest possible and for the largest number of units, which is primarily the single-family units, but still cover the cost by using about 2/3 of the Special Strategic Partnership Agreement funds that came from UMass for this purpose. The owner-occupied parcels would remain at $100 a year, all other parcels at $150 a year, plus 100 per additional unit, up to a max of just over $1,000 per parcel. And a parcel could have 40 units on it, it could have 10 units on it. But again, this is a per parcel permit. Inspections we set at $150 per unit. Next slide. I don't know if, I don't know if Rob Mora is in the audience. At this point, I was going to pass this over. There he is. Magically appeared. I would like to introduce Rob Mora, who was extremely helpful in helping formulate and, and formulate this, this bylaw. So I'm gonna turn it over to Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob Mora, Building Commissioner. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about implementation plan, should the council adopt this bylaw and it go into effect later in April. This is a inspection program that is accomplished over a five-year period. But what I'm going to describe to you right now is a six-year implementation for that first year being a way to roll out the program and phase into a fully functioning program, fully staffed program. And, and as mentioned, the Strategic Partnership Agreement dedicated $100,000 for supporting safe and healthy neighborhoods. The town manager has committed those funds to support this program, should it move forward. And what we would look to do is start immediately by hiring one of the needed inspector positions to move the program forward this spring into summer, and start to develop the program. And, you know, what that means is preparing the inspection checklist, building out the electronic open gov system that we use for tracking our, our permit and licenses, outreach to the owners of the properties, and, and education as much as we can to prepare for what the inspection program would look like, with the, the intent of starting some inspections in early '25, to, to get things moving, to start to work out any issues, and build that system for a fully, fully scheduled inspection program starting in July of '25. So what that will allow us to do is not have to hire all the needed positions all at one time. We would look to bring in our second inspector just before going into that full first year. So a year from July, we would be ready for that. So leading up to that, that, you know, being prepared for that time, we would bring in the, the rest of the staff. And the goal would be to complete the first five-year inspections, inspection cycle by July of 2030. Thank you.
We're open to questions, and again, want to thank the CRC for spending this kind of time, to the Town Inspection Department for the support, and to Shalini Bal Millen for our outreach efforts. I will add here, thanks to the community for contributing input and guidance.
I might also mention that I believe this is the third time this has come to the council. The other two times is, was referred back to CRC. With a lot of work has been done along the way. So thanks to some counselors that are no longer even on the council, as well as the counselors who are on the council. George, you have your hand up.
Yeah, it seemed that during the, near the end of the process, some concerns were raised by local landlords, and if I read that timeline right, there was a further meeting, and I'm wondering what, if any, changes were made to the bylaw to meet those concerns.
Can I respond?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Pam.
One of the key elements that changed, and anyone can correct me if you want to add more. One of the elements that changed is that we decoupled the nuisance bylaw and the having three violations of a nuisance bylaw actually disallow someone, potentially disallow someone from getting a permit to, to rent the building. I'm gonna look at other people across the room and/or Rob Mora for further. Rob has his hand up. Rob?
A couple additional items that we finalized in the last versions this, earlier this year, following those discussions, included a reduction in the number of units that would be inspected in the large complexes from 20% to 10%. So properties that have 10 or more units will have up to 10% of their total units inspected, rather than 20%, which was an earlier version of the, the document. We also had decided that certain properties that undergo inspection, either by their mortgagee or insurance requirements that are conducted perhaps by a federal program inspector could satisfy the inspection requirements, as long as those have been done within the five years. And we would, we would allow the, the owners of the properties to submit that information and, and request the waiver of the inspection for those reasons. Thank you.
Mandy Jo, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, in short, anything in the tracked changes marked up version that is marked up is what was changed in response from December to that. So, so that's why there's a tracked changes version. It can show you what was changed. But the other thing I would add is, within the bylaw itself, I think it's the bylaw, but it might be, no, it, it, under the consent section, there was a tenant authorization section added that the tenant may specifically deny access to the dwelling unit for that, that inspection, and, and how that is done, and what, whether a, whether and what permit is issued if the tenant specifically denies access for that required inspection. So that was also one of the big specific things response, responsive to the landlord concerns. George?
So a tenant may deny access. The property still will be inspected, but not that particular unit. Is that, am I understanding that basically? So it gives the tenant a certain right, but the building still, or another unit of the building will be inspected?
Unless there isn't another.
Yeah, exactly. There could be.
Long, yeah.
And then that's just, that's just too bad.
Right.
I might, a very broad one, and, but it sounds like someone can lose a landlord, or someone who's renting in Amherst, can lose their right to do that under certain circumstances, correct? I mean, there's many, many ways to remedy it, and they're spelled out in the, in the bylaw. But it is possible that at some point, all the remedies have been exhausted, and you just won't be able to do business in this town. Is that?
For that property.
Specific to the property doesn't mean you make another property, and so you could fill those properties. But for that particular property, I'm just trying to get a handle on what, is there like a, a death penalty here, so to speak? Or no?
Pam?
I would say, there is a process for, for correcting the problems, and there is a, there is a reinspection process for doing just that. Timelines are given, and I would say it's probably extremely rare that, that there would ever be a shutdown unless the building was in such deplorable condition that it should not be inhabited. And I think that's, the town staff works very hard to to accommodate and, and bring along even reluctant landlords, but to correct the actions, and that's the process that is described. And if, if all else fails and something is closed down, there is also an appeal process, which didn't really exist before either.
And, and George, just to be clear, it's by property, it's not by, okay, thank you. Any other questions, George? No. Bob Hegner?
Yeah, I have two questions on timing and time-related. The first is, will the 100,000, will any other town funds be required for startup? Or will the $100,000 plus the new fees, rental fees, registration fees cover the, the program from the start? And then after the five years, when the $100,000 sunsets, will we need to raise the inspection fees? And if so, will that require a change in the bylaw?
Okay, Rob or Paul? Rob, maybe you want to go with that one?
Sure. So for, for startup, there's no additional funds needed other than the $100,000, a portion of the $100,000 and the anticipated fees that will be collected. The, the program is designed to run based on the fees for the annual permit, the inspections, and about 2/3 of that $100,000 strategic partnership money. After the five years is up, then we have to find a way to fund that. So if, if the town manager has any comment on that now, if not, you know, that is something that will have to be looked at in the future, whether it's raising fees or some other funding source.
But if, if we wanted to change the fees, we would have to revise the bylaw?
No, no, no. Pam Rooney?
We would not have to. We have regulations, and as proposed now, this would go to Board of Licenses, a licen, licensure. And they would, as we have adjusted other fees in town over the last couple of years, they would have the responsibility to keep the, the program going if it, if it's working.
It's, it's the Board of License Commissioners. Thank you. Okay, Alicia?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. First, sort of just picking up on George's question about when the, when it comes time for inspection, how notification will happen to a tenant. So will it just be like, your unit is being inspected on this day, or will they have some sort of choice? So for example, if they showed up at a tenant's door and a tenant is refusing, maybe because this is not a good day, as opposed to, I don't ever want my unit inspected. Is there an opportunity for that to be rescheduled at a time that works better for the tenant? Or is that possible to be coordinated beforehand so that doesn't occur?
Rob, do you want to answer those?
Yes. We anticipate the scheduling of inspections will happen pretty far in advance, so it'll be a known schedule. It will be the responsibility of the owner or, or property manager to coordinate and give notice to the tenant. And I would expect, we'll be prepared for, you know, all kinds of things to happen, including being, you know, showing up to a being, you know, showing up to a property to conduct an inspection and perhaps a unit, a tenant of a unit, for whatever reason, does not want to have us in there that day. We can schedule, we can put it into a different cycle for another year if it's a tenant that just doesn't want to have the unit inspected. So we will have, you know, we will have protocols in place to deal with all of those situations.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one more question and one comment. My next question is, is there any way to prevent or monitor landlords from passing down the expense of the fee by increasing rent?
Anybody want to take that one on?
I'm going to answer that I, I don't know that we have that capability. Right.
Okay. So yeah, I just, I think that that is a concern for some tenants. And so I've had some communication from tenants who have received, in their opinion, confusing communication about what implications exist for this specific bylaw. And I've been reached out to by a number of tenants who have received communication directly from their landlord that tells them this bylaw is going to do things that it's not actually going to do. And I think tenants, some are, you know, for lack of a better word, freaking out about it. And so I am hoping that we can find another way to do some more robust outreach because people are concerned that their rent is going to go up. People are being told that they're going to have no choice as to whether or not their unit can be inspected. And they're also being told that, you know, town staff will be able to come and inspect your unit whenever they want and tenants should go to the town council meeting and tell them no. And so people are really worried about this. And so I'm hoping we can get some more clear information out to tenants as to what the actual implications are.
Thank you. Thank you. Catherine Walker. Kathy?
First, I want to say I appreciate how long many of you on CRC have worked on this. And my concern from the beginning, because I was almost an initial sponsor, but what I was sponsoring is trying to focus on nuisance houses, problem houses. So I'm somewhat worried that we are setting up a small bureaucracy to go after all rental units in town when there are, and I, and as Rob has said, we don't know how many are a problem in terms of falling apart, the slumlord side. So I, I would have preferred to start with a nuisance law that said, if you have a couple complaints against you, it triggers an inspection. So we started the inspection by, not by complaint, by triggering. So I am still worried about that and I am still worried about the financing of it. So Bob's question was, you know, will we cover it? So I think we need to have a periodic assessment on what is it we're actually doing with this. I, I've looked at, I actually pulled a lot of these different laws and Burlington has a pretty extensive inspection system with a lot of inspectors. And purely anecdotally, I have a nephew who was living in an abysmal apartment. So it didn't net, you know, with plumbing didn't work, lights didn't work, et cetera. So it didn't necessarily solve the problems. It may solve some of the nuisance problems. So I think we're trying to go after the houses, two kinds of houses. One is they're perpetually a problem in the neighborhood. Another is if you get inside them, they're a danger to the people who are living there. You know, they're, we've got slumlords. And sometimes you can tell from the outside of the house that probably things are deteriorating. So I, I continue to be worried that it's not as well targeted as, as it could be. I do like that we change the sampling for the really big apartment buildings that we're not going after as many units. And you have the right to sample more if it turns out that you're finding some problems. For the non-owner occupied but small landlords that have three or four units, the permit fee will be higher than the current fee is 250. So if you have four units, you're going to be considerably higher. So Alicia's concern about some of this will show up as rent. We don't have rent control in the state or in our town. So to the extent it gets passed on, it will get passed on. So I, I just think we should all realize what we're doing here. We are, above all, I don't want it to be a financial drain on our operating costs. We're really short of funds for a lot of essential services. So I want to know it fully pays itself for at least five years and then we take a look at it. So that's my concern. It's been my concern from the beginning. I still, I know we, we said we're, we're waiving, if you're already being inspected by federal or state and you show that you had inspection, the wording still doesn't say there is an exemption. It says may exempt or may, may inspect. I've always wanted to move that into the exemption. And I know that the reason CRC didn't is that Rob made strong arguments why it should be left worded. I can't see why we would inspect places that are federally or state inspected. So I just want to lower the number we inspect, not increase. So that may wording is in I1B1. And the, those properties are not listed under the exemption category. So it's, it's just one section of where it could get moved to a straight exemption. So I will stop there. I do think there were improvements in the fee structure and in the sampling to make it less onerous than when we first saw it. So thank you very much.
George?
I guess this is for Rob. Is there need to be worried about compliance? In other words, one of the points made earlier in the meeting was that one of the motives behind, behind this was that the number of permits seemed to be declining and hence people were not actually participating in the program. Now everyone is, who rents is going to be inspected. Should we be concerned about compliance? Is that, and what can we do about it? To ensure that everyone who rents a property actually has a permit?
Rob? Or Jennifer? Did you want to try to answer that?
No, I have another question.
Okay, Rob. Thank you.
You know, one important thing that's happened in the last two years is that we've, we've purchased and implemented a permitting and licensing program that gives us the ability to really monitor, you know, who's receiving licenses and the renewal process and get that information really quickly. And we weren't able to do that before under the older, old system. That was put together really quickly at the start of this program and, and we never were able to enhance that until very recently. So last year we went through and did a, did a check as we were working on this bylaw on, for compliance. And we did find, off the top of my head, it was 110 or 120 properties that were, that should have been permitted that were not permitted. So I think we've straightened that out. So we have gotten those, those properties licensed again. And I think going forward, we'll be able to monitor those and we have a better system to coordinate with the assessor's office and we monitor transfers of properties. So I think all of these things with staff. So right now we have one individual from the beginning in 2013 that did all of this and, and as much of it as could be done at any time. But I think with all of these pieces together, there'll be a lot less of that non-compliance.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just want to respond because Alyssa, Alicia raised a really important point, which may be via our own if and when this should, you know, the council would vote to approve it. That maybe between all the counselors in our mailing list, we could, you know, maybe somebody could even, one of the committees, I don't know if it would be Town Services and Outreach, to, you know, draft a summary and details of what this bylaw entails so that that could be disseminated to residents so that they would have accurate information about the program.
Thank you, Jennifer. I would appreciate that as a district counselor. Are there any other questions or comments? We're not voting tonight. We are, this will be back on the agenda for the second reading and our vote next week. At that point, we'll vote on the bylaw, the regulations and the fees. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move quickly on. Anna, are you with us? Thank you.
Always.
I know you were. I just wanted to, respectful. The next item is a proposed change, minor change, I might say, in the Charter Review Committee charge. And I'm going to make the motion, Anna, maybe you want to second it, to amend the 2024 Charter Review Committee charge by striking nine in the number of voting members and replace it with seven and striking nine residents in the composition section and replacing it with seven residents. Is there a second, Anna?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And you'll go ahead and talk about GOL.
I will. And I'm sorry I'm not there in person. I'm not feeling well and I didn't want to subject you all to me not feeling well. So I appreciate the patience with, with letting me zoom in. So this came, and I also want to apologize, the second apology, is that this is not a written report and in the future you will have written reports. So I appreciate the grace in, in hearing from me right now. GOL has now for several weeks been unable to find the pool for the Charter Review Committee to be sufficient. There is not necessarily a specific formula, a specific number we are seeking. However, based on the app, the CAFs that we have received, the community activity forms we have received, we have not as a committee been able to make that vote and, and even hold the vote and no motion has been made. So part of this discussion in our last GOL meeting was, you know, what do we need to do in order to let this committee get their work started because they have a lot of work to do? And Counselor Ryan suggested possibly reducing the number of members to seven. And, and the discussion really centered on nine as a bit of an arbitrary number. There was concern, this was not a unanimous decision from the committee, and I wanted to just bring up some of our concerns. And I also will welcome any other members of GOL who want to add any thoughts. But the concerns with lowering the number include melt rate. So we looked at other committees that had seen a drop off in, in membership as they went along, as well as concern regarding community representation on the committee. The, the committee was divided, but our consensus was really that we wanted the council to have this discussion. Obviously, the council would be the one to make the decision. And, you know, while every committee member on GOL wasn't set on seven, we, we wanted to bring this to you all to, to talk about it and see if, if the council thinks that dropping the number to seven would allow us to get the work done and would result in a, a committee that is, meets the selection criteria that we have established. I think I'll leave it there. If there's anything that GOL members would like to add, I welcome that as well.
Kathy?
Oh wait, sorry, can we, can we go to George first as a GOL member?
I'm sorry, George.
He's a question. Sorry.
George?
Yeah, I think we've really struggled to, to get to the point where we can declare the pool sufficient. And I thought this might be a way that we could get there. I think seven is perfectly decent number. With certainly we'd be able to, I think staff would get a good body. We're struggling with nine. I think we should have at least twice as many applicants and we're not anywhere close, at least at the moment. I haven't seen the latest numbers, but we're not close to 18. So I felt that by reducing it by two, we would be able to move forward and we could, we could put seven solid individuals on that body. If you want to keep it at nine, we're still going to have to keep looking for bodies, I think. Because I don't think we're, we don't have enough to make that decision.
Yeah, I'm going to go to Counselor Ette, who's also on GOL.
So seven is a beautiful number, but nine is no less beautiful than seven. I supported the decision to bring this to the council, even though I would prefer nine. The reason being that that provides a greater variety of people who could serve in that role. And in speaking and discussing this issue, I think that provides an opportunity for members in town to be, to, to know of the need that we have. And perhaps that deficit can be covered. But in any case, I think nine just provides a bit more variety than seven does.
Kathy Shane?
As far as I can see, and I went this morning to count all the CAFs, we have 16. And I may be off in terms of I might have missed one, but I did find 16. So 16 is a pretty healthy number to come, to then get to nine. And I, I can see why if you've got one slot open, you would like to have two people applying. But when we're getting to really big numbers, I'm not sure your ratio, George, is as important. You know, so two slots open is probably a good idea to have four people. But, but I wouldn't keep that math going upwards. You know, you can imagine the elementary school building committee, we have 13 people to say that, could only do it if we had 26. So I'm not sure I see a strong rationale for reducing it. And I do think one of the advantages of this Charter Review Commission is more people will know what's in the charter and they will also become familiar. There's a limited number of things that can be changed right now. And so that knowledge of what can be changed and what is not being driven by the charter per se, you know, if there's some council procedure that people aren't like, it's not driven by the charter, it's just driven by other things, you know, on. So I, I think having nine people get that depth of understanding is a very, is a very healthy thing to happen in our town, what, six years into this new government? You know, what's in it and what can be changed? So nine also, multiply that by each of them is talking to three, four or five people. They're not alone. So that also increases the depth of people who are thinking about this.
Pam Rooney?
Sorry, can I step really?
Yes, please.
We're currently by, I counted right before this meeting at 15. We did have one person withdraw their application and the committee looks beyond just strictly numbers. We have a set of selection criteria and so they also, the committee discussed looking at the other identifiable factors from the CAF, including age, gender identity, race, ethnicity and address.
Pam?
I think I would say almost exactly what Kathy just said. If, if we had that percentage of people available for ZBA consideration, I would be giddy. And I think of the, of the CAFs, I, I also had tallied up about 16 and was really puzzled why that didn't seem like a sufficient pool. I appreciate the, the comment that this does in fact give us a broader diversity from within the community. I've looked at all the people that, that put their names in and they come with a vast array of background and experience. So I would, I would encourage you to keep it at nine and move forward ASAP.
Mandy Jo?
So I was concerned that nine was too big when we passed this charge about a year ago. And I think we're seeing that maybe that concern is valid. I understand the comments that 15 or 16 for nine positions is plenty. But in my four years of chairing CRC, there were many times where CRC voted a pool sufficient for two, three or four openings in ZBA or planning board because at the time, the pool included just CAFs and that pool included for say, three openings, six, seven or eight people, or even just six or five. And we said, well, we've got more. But then when it came time for people to actually submit a statement of interest and go through an interview, that number that went from submitting CAFs and saying, I'm interested- that number that went from submitting CAFs and saying, I'm interested, to actually submitting a statement of interest and sitting for an interview dropped. And so if you start with 15 and you're seeking to fill nine spots, you might only end up with 12, 11, or 10. And that's when it becomes very difficult to say then the pool is sufficient. But there really isn't another opportunity to say whether the pool is sufficient or not at that time. You can, but it gets more difficult because at that time, you've already released names of who's applied. And so it is taken, if you're saying now that the pool is not sufficient, a lot of times, the public sees that and says, well, you're saying that because you don't like who. And so I'm going to support the move down to seven because I would be, I'll be pleasantly surprised if the 15 people who have submitted CAFs all submit SOIs and go through the interview. I will be thrilled, but my guess is that won't happen.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I just don't want to take a lot of time, but I would support. My inclination is to stay with the nine. I just feel more comfortable having a broader representation of the community on such an important committee.
Thank you. George?
So when you look at the applicants at the current level and you look at where they live, you find out that maybe many of them come from, say, district, I won't name a number, but let's say, well, take my district, District Three. So would you be okay with a body of nine people where, say, four of them come from the same district? Or would you expect that whether it's seven or nine, you want to see a pretty even spread? I think you probably would like to see a pretty even spread. So by keeping it at nine, you're going to make it a lot harder for us to get that kind of spread. You're going to make it a lot harder for us to declare the pool sufficient. Now, the other members will vote and we'll make our decision. But I guess in a way, I'm asking you to help us get this body started by reducing the number to seven. You'll still get an excellent pool, and it will be a diverse one. But if you keep it at nine, A, we're going to still have the same problem of sufficiency. And B, I'm not sure diversity is really going to be helped all that much. So I guess it's a cry for help, at least from one member of GOL.
Andy?
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could postpone this vote until subsequent meetings simply because the League of Women Voters is having a session about the Charter Review. And in that process, it could be encouraging people who choose to attend to apply. And we may get a group of additional applicants as a result. And that's now scheduled for this coming Sunday, April 7. So it doesn't seem like it's a big delay, but it might give us more applications and might make us feel more comfortable with the nine.
Lynn, may I? Yes, Anna.
Andy, I appreciate that. The reason why we, I asked Lynn to put it on this agenda is, one, the League of Women Voters already had their first meeting of that series. I did reach out to them to ask them to promote this. I do not have a way of knowing if CAFs correlate to that, but I was grateful if they did share that we wanted people. I am grateful to that. And the reason why we wanted to do it at this meeting is that GOL is meeting on Thursday of this week, and we'd love to be able to take up the topic of the sufficiency of the pool again. So hopefully, that message was communicated at the League's event on the 17th. And I know they have several more, but I would encourage us not to wait on this topic.
I also just want to clarify, we can declare the pool sufficient, but we can also still accept people. Is that correct?
That's correct. We can accept new CAFs up until the deadline for the statement of interest. They would just submit their CAF as well as their statement of interest.
Thank you. I thought that was our policy. Counselor Walker?
That information changes a little bit what I was about to say, so bear with me. But, I mean, I am in favor of staying with nine for a lot of the reasons why everyone else said. But I also think that this is like an incredibly significant group and that we should give them as much time as possible to be working on the things that they need to be working on. And I do understand the concerns on the other side. And so I just, what my suggestion would be, and again, I know that this changes a bit with what Anna just let me know about allowing people to continue to submit applications until the statement of interest deadline. But I would say that, like, I would encourage us to keep it at nine and then, like, set a date firm, like, we will go over this on this date. And is there any other way that we can spread massive awareness between now and whatever? Like, let's say we are going to readdress this at the GOL meeting next week. Can we do a press release and say, like, Amherst is looking for this? Like, what other ways can we mass release information between now and next week where we can just move along with this? I don't know, but that would be my suggestion.
Anna?
Yeah, so this is something that also came out of the GOL meeting is that GOL is going to be reaching out, GOL meaning me, I'm sorry, is going to be reaching out to Andy to hopefully have a discussion or hopefully prompt a discussion at TSO to talk about outreach for council-appointed committees. This is something that has been a big challenge for all of our council-appointed committees, not just Charter Review. And so we want to have this larger conversation about outreach and how we're able to do that because right now, the best mechanism we have is our own individual mailing lists. And that's not going to bring in new folks and tends to be kind of, can be a really limited pool. So that's not the direct answer to your question, but that's kind of the long-term hope is to improve our systems of outreach. I wanted to, to your initial point, GOL can keep not finding the pool sufficient. You know, I think that that's, there isn't necessarily a drop dead point. This group does have a report due back to the council in 2025. They can request an extension as we see other committees do often on reports like this. And then I think the only other thing I wanted to say is, we keep, folks keep framing this shift of seven to nine, which, two people, to be very clear, I know that seems like a dramatic shift, but two people fewer as a possibility that we're going to lose diversity on this committee. And I wanted to just raise the alternate possibility that having nine instead of seven might mean that there is more homogeneity amongst the group. Because when we look at the folks who have submitted CAFs, there's a lot of similarity. And so I think as we think about seven, it's not a guarantee that nine would be a more diverse representation of our community. What determines that is our selection guidance, which is what GOL did set. And we are seeking diversity on a number of dimensions that you're welcome to if you want to look back in our meeting folder. So I just, I did want to challenge a bit the assumption that nine would automatically be a more diverse pool based on the CAFs that we have so far. Thanks.
Pat?
Just a quick question. Is there any reason why we can't change the number of members on the committee to be between seven and nine and then move ahead with the pool that we have and see what, who is on it?
I don't think there's any reason you can do that, but you don't want is an even number. Alicia?
Thank you, Anna. I appreciate that comment. But just in terms of diversity, my thought there, and that was one of my reasonings, and I can't remember if I explicitly listed it because I'm getting tired. But I prefer nine in terms of diversity because diversity of thought and less about, like, diversity demographically or like that. Because no two people really think alike or have the same experience in this town. And also, this is a committee that I would assume is going to do a large amount of outreach or like communicating with the community, and we all have like different circles of people. And so I think just in terms of reaching more people in the town, having the nine, in my opinion, is what I mean by like bringing more diversity to like the conversation that can happen in those groups. And I know two is not a large number, but it could make a huge difference. Like, it also has that possibility on the other end.
Anna?
Yeah, and Alicia, that comment was not directed at you specifically, just to be really, really clear. I think it could go either way on diversity of thought, too, and on networks, too. And yes, everyone has a slightly different experience in this town. But one of the things that we are looking for in our selection guidance is that difference in opinion and approach, right? And so I would encourage folks to read through that. It's something that the committee is taking really intentionally into our process as we go through, when we finally get to that stage. But I think, as with anything, it could go either way. I think for me, it's really about, nine is not a guarantee of anything, and neither is seven.
So the motion's been made and seconded. The motion is to amend the 2024 Charter Review Committee charge by striking nine in the number of voting members and replacing it with seven and striking nine residents in the composition section and replacing it with seven residents. Seeing no other hands, I'm going to move to a vote. Bob Hegner?
Yes.
Counselor Lord?
Lord, no.
Excuse me?
Point of order?
Yes.
What are we actually voting on? Are we voting to reduce the number or are we voting on the slate, the current number?
We're voting to reduce the number from nine to seven. Thank you for asking. Okay. Lord, that was a nay, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Pam Rooney?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Kathy Shane?
No.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Pat DeAngelis?
No.
Anna Devlin-Gotham?
Hi.
Counselor Ette?
No.
Lynn Griesmer is a nay. Counselor Haneky?
Hi.
The motion fails. With all 13 counselors voting, it is eight to five. Eight, I'm sorry, five in favor, eight against. We, the hour is late, gang. And Anna, I wanted to ask if you really do want to go ahead with liaisons or wait till next week? It's one week.
Nothing is prohibiting folks from watching meetings that they, committees that they care about. So I would encourage people, if you are invested in the work of a specific committee as an individual counselor, watch what they're doing, see what's going on there. And I'm happy at that point to wait until the next meeting to do formal assignments unless anyone else has an objection.
Okay. Committee reports? Community Resources Committee, Pam Rooney?
Thank you. You've heard a lot from us tonight. But on March 12, CRC heard from the Building Commissioner on proposed implementation plan, which you heard tonight. A second item is a special meeting of the CRC will be on April 2. That would be tomorrow night to interview our candidates for ZBA vacancies. And finally, that we CRC sent the proposed nuisance bylaw update to the town manager for legal review and to GOL for its normal review. So we look forward to getting that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy and Counselor Walker?
The only thing I have to report, you already see, and a lot of you were there, we broke ground on the Elementary School Building Project. But I know there's going to be traffic changes and pickup changes in the website. I'll send this to everyone later again, so you can look at it, is amherst-school-project.com. We're putting up blurbs, news blurbs, on a regular basis and a map. And this is going out to all the parents and students. But to the extent you get questions, and I'll just give everyone the link, that's going to be updated on a regular basis as they change the traffic pattern on where cars come in and out and next steps. So we're using that website. And there's a link at ARPS to the website, too. So to the extent possible, people are being notified. We don't have another meeting until a couple of weeks from now.
Okay. Finance Committee?
We have met several times since the last time I reported. We have discussed and made recommendations on the $1.5 million debt authorization for the high school track and field and for the surplus property disposition policy. I think they're still before the council. We talked about the CPA recommendation today, and we've also started a discussion on the budget review process. Tomorrow, our meeting will review the audit and begin review of the regional school budget and continue the review or the discussion on the budget review process.
Thank you. GOL, Anna?
GOL had worked through several different resolutions and proclamations, and we have several more coming up on our list. We are still seeking applicants for both Charter Review Committee, as you just heard, and Finance Committee. This is my desperate plea. If you voted no, please send me at least three CAFs in the next couple of days for this, for both of these committees, because this is really, this is getting really tough. And if you look at the breakdown, y'all, it's, we need more folks. So please encourage people to submit interest, community activity forms, excuse me. We also began our review process of the town manager evaluation, really starting just looking at our own process at our coming meeting. Each GOL member was assigned several other towns to look at their processes and see what works well, what doesn't work well, and what we might consider after the retreat. I think this is a really good exercise for GOL to go through and also start considering the impact that this has on the goals. So we're looking at other towns and bringing that back. We have several future agenda items, including the nuisance bylaw and the AHRA report that we are waiting to hear back from legal review on. We are not avoiding putting these on any agenda. We have not gotten them back from our legal team. So once we have them back, we will put them on an agenda and be able to move on those. But to date, I do not have them. So I have them from the initial folks who created them, but I do not have them back from legal review. GOL meets this week and will be continuing on, continuing on.
Thank you. Jones Library, Pam Rooney, Paul Bachmann?
There have been no meetings.
TSO, Andy Steinberg?
What's something on library yet?
Paul, Library?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you have anything you wanted to add on Library?
So we have a new location for the subject to final negotiation of the lease, but we would need to get an RFP out there for moving services. And it's at 101 University Lane, University Drive, which is adjacent next to the post office of Orientu. It's a great location, less than a mile from the current location on a bus route. So three-minute drive, 10-minute bus ride, so very good location.
Thank you. TSO, Andy?
Yeah, the TSO's had a number of meetings. Rather than try and give a comprehensive report, now what I'm going to do is endeavor to get a written report into the packet for the next meeting. And then I can answer any questions that come up there. The one thing that we did do that is a recommend, recommendation back to the council, so it needs to just move along at some point, was the approval of a proposal on North Pleasant Street for modifications of mostly sidewalks and the bus stops, crosswalks. And, but as I say, I'll endeavor to get a written report to you. Save time tonight.
Thank you. Town managers' report, Paul?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Wanted to note that to Wanted to note that to, tomorrow, we have to meet and greets with the two finalists for the police chief, one at 5:00 PM with Todd Herne and one at 6:30 with Gabriel Ting. They will also be here for most of the day interviewing with the search committee as they continue to have their deliberations. And, and with me, with me, with me and with the HR Director. The Crest Director has her first day on Monday, April 8. We're planning a reception for her when she gets her feet on the ground in the first week or two, as soon as we can get that arranged. And you have already noticed that the North Common has, is now under construction again. The contractor is eager to get that project up and running and finished. And we will, they have a deadline of June 30th, so they're making really good progress. The one thing that you'll notice is that the bus stop that is in front of Town Hall is now going to be moved down Main Street a little bit while they do that construction on that, on that curbing, then it'll be moved, relocated back to where it is.
Okay. Questions of the Town Manager. George Ryan.
Bank Center, Elevator.
It's out of commission.
Can you tell me the story? It's two months, is that how it's going to be out for two months?
Oh, I don't know what the exact timeframe is. It's a long story, I can tell you.
We've got time, Paul.
So, okay. So, yeah, it's, it's been a, it's operational but not passing inspection. And so there's some water in the pit that they won't pass inspection since they're, and we can get the water out, but they want us to get a waterproofing company come in and waterproof the pit. They're about a month away from being able to come in and do the waterproofing. It's very frustrating from our staff.
I'm just, do we have a sense of how we kind of, the ball got dropped? Or was it just, we're due for an inspection and that's what they found?
Yes.
That was it?
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments for the Town Manager? Okay. Town Council comments, there's no President's Report. I can tell you that I'm looking at what we've potentially scheduled for April 8, and we're going to need to reduce it because it is just too much. And so, but I also want to make note that we have asked you to hold April 29th for a council meeting. The idea might be that we'd be voting on the regional school budget at that time, but we may also shift some of these items to that night, too. The items that I'm looking at for April 8, the possible items are, and this is not a promise, update on Hickory Ridge, two resolutions, Children's Mental Health Awareness Week and Day, and Jewish American Heritage Month. Rental Registration Bylaw Regulations and Fee Schedules, Second Reading and Vote, Amherst College Sign Requests, North Pleasant Street Pedestrian Improvements, Valley Bike, Surplus Property, Planning Board Report on Amherst Hills, Nuisance Bylaw if ready. I think that would be enough to discourage most people. Are there any questions? Yes, George. Andy.
I just, you, you reminded me of something that was important that I should have said with TSO. TSO also voted to recommend the sign for, that was requested by Amherst College. And since that's on next week's agenda, I thought I should add to my report of tonight, just to say that that recommendation was made.
Thank you. Are there any other Counselor comments or future agenda items? Seeing none, I'm making a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Shane, seconds.
Okay. We're moving to that vote, and the vote is, we have to do the voting. Counselor Lord.
Lord, aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselorete.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer's, aye. Counselor Hannicki.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.